For some reason, it's not that same.
So I have two pictures, I wonder if I can get them into, so I have a team and as soon as they see you, I'm gonna.
Well, honestly, I don't think I'm ever going to.
One of the things, like, like, maybe.
Yeah.
You're like, I don't know. Oh, you're okay.
Yeah.
Where, do you remember where it was that you, you saw the picture that you finished?
I'm trying to remember. I go over here.
So.
Oh, right, right, right. It was just a flash. I'll, I'll think of it.
Could've been getting.
No, no, it was out north. It was south north, go over.
Oh, yeah, I was just explaining, like, now we're not too, but they were, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, no green heat.
Oh, this looks, oh, where did he come from? Where's he coming from? My computer in here. Oh, is it turned on high in there?
Nice. You might have a video right here.
Well, that's right. Now that's another.
Yeah. Funny, it's because you work with the.
I don't want to control it in here, but to hear the.
Our controls are part of the nest in here.
It's for the back door, though?
No, right here. Both numbers.
It will, because it's running.
We've got two, one is covered by the thing here.
Okay.
And the other one is, is, I'm not exactly certain which one is which.
Anyway. Right up the front, I'm gonna take a picture of them. Really did.
Let's discuss it for you this.
Oh, yes, but I can say that it must have been. Next time I would hear it, I would see them and do it. Yeah, they're beautiful, the player.
This is seventy seven in here right now.
There's like.
Is that?
He has to pause.
Wow. That it?
What is it, the alley, under the road?
A bit toesy over there, right? Yeah, you go around here and it's. Yeah, I'm not gonna.
I love that it's just.
That's just not, yeah. Yeah, because I've done that before. So it's like, you know, you just.
I've done that. And well, it's a whole day.
Mayor, I'm not sure which one of these is the correct microphone.
Oh, okay.
For the system. Well, I got out here.
Okay, that will sit tight.
I guess.
At least you can see it.
So what did you think of the next one? No, that is exciting. I think that's gonna be all. Well, we put two, so I know. One of them is really tall. It's like leaning down really bad.
Microphone array, I believe that is right. Let's go from there and find out what happens. Let me show you something.
You go like to, uh, lobster valley. And then there's a road before you start getting up and go down there. There's a road that goes up there. However, I don't know if it's spec gates on it or not, because I think it's probably very star of it, but. It's pretty cool. You can actually just. Drive all the way down to the, uh, the next branch. Actually, I've driven the valley all the way.
Like whole city areas?
Well, I'm up, it's down the.
Be better with us, folks. We had a very late start trying to set up all of these tables. We came in and nothing was arranged, so we are about fifteen minutes behind. I think we'll get started in two minutes.
Oh, there we go. Here, I'll set the timer. You're right here. I knew if I touched it, you would appear. Oh, yeah, good. We're at relative, you're gonna come in here? Room here.
Yes.
Which slide you wanna sit on? Tell me which slide you wanna sit on, I'll get one of them.
I'm just. Worrying you're over there.
We'll make you sit like. Damn, how about, I don't know, grid? God, I didn't take this far. He claimed. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are we ready to go?
We are.
Okay. All right, I'm calling our city council meeting order. It is October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Let's go ahead and meet and greet each other. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under a invisible, literally, being a justice. Councillor Wright, here. Councillor Winter.
Here.
Councillor.
Here.
Councillor Buckwoodson, turn away. Councillor Evans. Councillor White.
Here.
And this is the first time in a while, oh, this is a. Councillor Buckwoodson. Okay. Okay, fine. All right, we have next on the agenda, public comment. Everybody that would like to provide public comment, and so, I have to go to the podium. It's your name and. It's your partner, about three minutes. Only once. Once. You are? Is that my phone? But try and use the mic, then we can actually, we'll have it recorded in everybody.
Okay.
I'm Bill Comanche of the Ball Fountain, and I was told by one of your employees that, well, it came through my wife, that there's people coming from outside the area, Junction City, Eugene, Cavallis. They're trying to push kind of their agendas on the Monroe area. So I didn't know whether you folks knew anything about that, or had heard anything about it. But this is what was passed on to me, so.
What, what agendas?
Well, they, they, they didn't say specific. They just said that they were trying to do their, I don't know how you say it, well, the only thing I'd say is agenda, you know, that. Uh, different types of things that they would like seeing Monroe do that kind of conforms with their areas of doing things. That's, that's all I know about it, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you think you'd be a little bit more specific, we can address.
That's all, that's all I know about it, you know, so I just thought, well, that's why I came tonight, because I felt our community is kind of a unique little community that we didn't want people with bigger influences than what ours are to come in here and try and, you know, and, uh, to influence things that we might not be, you know, in, in favor of. One, one, one thing, um, one other thing I wanted to say is, um, it, what, it's not just last year, the year before that, they had that Monroe, it wasn't a parade thing, they had the booths here.
The Monroe Festival.
Yeah, the Monroe Festival. There was a booth that was set up by two individuals, and one of them lives here in Monroe, and I, I assumed that he was in favor of it, about removing the dam here in Monroe, and I questioned him about, um, I said, what's Monroe gonna do for our water source if the dam was removed, you know, as far as, you know, backup water supply, whatever, you know? Because if the dams are moved, there's a certain amount of gallons of water that is not gonna be in access, you know, what Monroe might need to function on, you know, for even a few days. So that was my concern, you know, that's, I guess that's the main reason I came here today, because, um, of that influence from that particular person.
Okay, well, we actually had a, go a separate ad hoc committee that actually addresses that very topic of the dam. And I have an individual in the room that could probably help get you some information. John, would you be willing to talk with them after the meeting here? That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, I think we're done with public comment, we're gonna move on if that sounds good. Uh, or two staff reports and updates. Looks like we have the city administrator's first.
That's correct, thank you, Mayor. I'm sharing my screen here for the benefit of the public as well, just to view, uh, what we're discussing. Um, the very first thing on the list, actually, for my city administrator's report, is to focus on the work that we've been doing over the last several weeks with the Long Tom Waterside Council. On the eleven thirty five mill race project, this is the project to remove the dam, drop structure, and this has been going on for some time, for several years now. Uh, there have been multiple presentations to the city, uh, and where we are right now is we're at the stage where the US Army Corps of Engineers has proposed three potential ways of bringing that dam down, if we were to do that. Um, which includes a full removal, partial removal, and a modification option. We held a number of internal discussions. We're holding weekly meetings with the Long Tom Waterside Council, John Bradanis from the planning commission, and myself as city staff. Um, and, and what we're essentially doing is prepare this, we prepare a summary table to assist the property owners there on the river with the options that were provided to us, so that we can get feedback from those property owners and better understand which approach they themselves would like to see, because, though, those structures actually are their ownership. So we'd have to have their buy-in approval, and we're gonna be pulled with any one of those potential options. Um, right now, the water intake design, which is what this gentleman was disreferencing a few minutes ago, when that dam comes down, the water intake will need to be redesigned. And as a result of that, we will have to bring on a, an engineer who can put together a request proposal for another engineer to propose the actual intake design. The Long Tom Waterside Council has the majority, if not all, of that funding available in hand. Um, it was previously believed that they could move forward on our behalf with that water intake RFP. Um, one of the things that I did coming on board is I made it clear that because of Oregon's procurement clause and the fact that it is our public water system, we must be the entity that releases that request proposal, and so we will be doing it, and they'll be transferring those funds to us directly to handle that, but the Long Tom Waterside Council will remain a, a key component and player in that process. Um, and we'll be coordinating with branch engineering on the RFP component. They will not be doing any of the actual work, because our engineer record doesn't have specific expertise in, uh, anything along the lines of public works projects. Um. I went to the Oregon Infrastructure Summit. I talked about that a little while ago, too, as well, at the, uh, at our last work session. That was in Seaside. I attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Portland. Focused heavily on topics that are relevant to infrastructure and capital projects planning. That was a big focus of the conference. We are not the only city facing that challenge right now. And we continue to move forward very successfully at this point in time with the website transition. Um, it remains on schedule, the city domain and our DNS record, um, I have been in the, in the weeds with that, and finally been able to acquire the information that Civic Plus needed from us to get that forward. That has happened as of today. Um, we completed a design worksheet, which told them how to complete it, what we wanted in terms of colors and everything else within the website. We also hosted staff training, two staff trainings that they require on two separate days. Myself, Don, and Shanon were present during that staff training, so we received everything that they provide, and we continue to go through their, uh, education platform that tells us how to make edits and things like agendas and webpages. I expect this website to be up and running, really within the next day or two. Our plan had been for it to be up and running on the twenty second of this month, but those DNS issues that we were having were significant. Uh, there was a lot going on behind the scenes with how our old website was creating issues for the, the new website, so I was able to tamp those down, adjust them against Civic Plus, if they were on track.
TJ, can you, can you remind folks, like, what is DNS, what's that acronym?
Somebody who was more technical savvy than me could tell you, but I know what, what it does is it takes a WWW dot and it converts it into an IP address.
It's like a domain.
Domain.
It's domain name.
Names.
Yeah, domain name, something, that's what it does. It converts letters into numbers.
Go ahead.
Uh, and that was having issues because of the way that we set up our WordPress site previously.
So it's going live the twenty ninth?
Yes.
Okay. So how long ago?
Yes, there you go. Um, and we, we do expect, like I said, look here, that on the twenty ninth, that will be present to be up and present for the public to do. Um, on public safety and emergency preparedness, uh, coordinated with the emergency operations and preparedness organization for the county, um, aligning our priorities with county level efforts. Those, that organization meets quarterly, and they have a next quarterly meeting coming up in November. They reached out to me, and so I'll be participating in that effort. I've worked with regional partners to track resilience in emergency facility development trends and participate quarterly. Again, this is that executive nine one one, um, advisory board. Regards to finance and budget, review payroll procedures, and issue internal guidance protocols for staff to clarify our submission and approval process over moving forward. This is to make sure that we have enough time to process payroll. Previously, we were completing payroll before the end of the month and making adjustments as needed following the month. So we're actually building in a little bit of upper time to allow for Don and myself to actually correctly submit payroll. Checks will be coming a couple of days later. Normally, folks are getting paid on the first, but this meant they had to complete their hours for the month a couple of days before the end of the month, uh, and so we had to make a correction there, and that correction has been made. Um, and we're also continuing to monitor city funds for LGIP balances. There's no significant irregularities to report at the moment, but there will be some need for further discussion on the disposition of the number of accounts that we have, uh, for council to look at in the coming months. We'll include that in our session, well advanced of our March, um, budget plan, when we get off. City council and governance, coordinated committee assignments, um, and we're gonna be talking about that this afternoon, this evening. Um, and we continue to implement, implement best practices for public meeting law. That includes twelve committees and the full council. For planning and menus, I've managed planning and menus processes for residential and multifamily applications. Several of those are in progress. Most of those, uh, existed before we came on board. Just one partition has come in for the Paulson sites, um, in the last couple of weeks, so that one will be processed moving forward. The PMDI subdivision application is coming up on the third, so they will be having their public hearing, and that notice to go out and require twenty day timeframe. Um, we've been discussing procedural requirements for subdivision notices and code certifications with council, and we've also been going through city-owned properties to identify which properties we would actually like to hold on to. You all have already been apprised on that at our last, um, meeting. And then we're also working, more importantly, on the forms that need to be really corrected, revised, created in many cases. Um, council or to the commission will be moving forward with that in the next couple of weeks. Um, and the other important things to note are really public education and outreach. Um, in our water bills, we are including good quality information, so this last water bill, you all saw information about the website coming out, the recruitment notices, we have received applications for those improvements locally, that's a bad, which was really nice. Um, and then also including things like the person's pond appreciation, uh, for folks to hear about that, not just in the county council, but in their water bills as well. Um, I'm also continuing to coordinate, coordinate with Benton County Sheriff's Office regarding public safety matters. We appreciated Benton County's assistance, uh, in the, in the significant issue that occurred a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, we, we very much thank them for everything they were able to do for us. Those are the big things that I have to present in my report. Are there any questions or anything that came out of that report that you'd like to ask about?
And your plan, your menus, what is PMDI?
Yes, that is the name of the applicant, Pacific National Development Department.
I'm a little concerned about the website. I know that it was supposed to be up live on the twenty second and kind of missed that date, um, so it's point seven today, right?
It is.
So you think it's four days will be ready?
Yes.
And the notice go out, um, in the water bill about the launch of the new city website?
Though, yes, the notice went out in the water bill that we would be launching by the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely. Yeah, again, that was something that, uh, unfortunately, the inherited.
I understand.
Hungry stuff that was going on and coding behind the scenes. It was rather complex, and it took a little while.
I can imagine, but thank you for that.
Any other questions?
We have, uh, I know Don is on now, so, Don, if you are, I have this, uh, memo that you provided to the council, and if you'd like to speak to this, I can get my screen up for you.
I do have it. I have a copy in front of me as well. Uh, so I just wanted to touch base on a few different things that happened this month in particular. Uh, we did get a small grant from, uh, Department of Land and Conservation and Development for planning-related purposes. This is non-restricted. Uh, it was a two thousand dollar grant that we got in. So we did get that money. Um, we have our fiscal year twenty twenty five audit complete. We're just waiting to get the final forms into the auditors. TJ and I plan to meet, I think, early next week on this and get them everything they need, and this will be the first one we've completed on time in the last three years. So, so quite the accomplishment for us. We're finally caught up.
Audit after audit since what, April?
Oh, God, yeah, I finished like three this year. It's, it's been crazy. Um, and then also earlier this month, I did go to Redmond for a local budget law training, which I should have received probably a few years back. Uh, very informational, met a lot of great people from different districts. Um, I have a lot more information to bring this next, uh, fiscal year to our budget, and we will be working on that together and getting Marks and other department input as well, uh, going forward on our budgets, so I think, I think we're on the right track.
That's awesome, that's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Dylan?
Just keep up the good work, Dylan.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You did a great job, well, thank you.
Yeah.
And then we also have Mark on this evening. Mark provided a report as well. Mark, are you there? I know I saw you.
Right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening. Sorry, I, uh, didn't make it in person. Um, so just some, uh, highlights from the Public Works. So we had our, um. Our water plant survey a couple of months back, and there were some things that came from that that we needed to fix, one of those being, um. Uh, updating, uh, some of our calibration equipment and then, or not equip, updating our, updating our calibration chemicals and then u- updating our calibration on the equipment. So that has now been done. We are up to date with our calibration chemicals and our calibration on the equipment that was needed. Um. Meter installations. I have about nine more three quarter inch meters of the new ones that we have that I'm gonna be installing. I'm gonna get with Don, and we're gonna figure out some of the more problematic, um, accounts that meters have been failing or whatnot. Um, that's the nine three quarter inch meters. I'll have five one inch meters to install and, uh, two two inch meters that I can install before I'm basically gonna be holding off eight meters for, um, an emergency reserve. Um, so I've been working on some of my professional development, uh, trying to chisel out the last hour of the day to focus on, um, my water, uh, distribution and my water treatment studies, so I can try and get those tests knocked, knocked out as soon as possible. Uh, trying for the, uh, end of March to be completely certified in both of those.
Is that to, to sign a side level two requirement, so level three, what, um, what are the certification requirements specifically? I know, I know that it's like a. Second or third level graduating system, right?
Sorry, I can't really hear what.
Oh, shoot, sorry. Um, can you share what the certification goes for, if it's to increase your level of authority in a topic, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it would, it would increase my level of authority, um, and it would eventually, so we have a treatment system that requires a level two, um, treatment operator, and I'm gonna try and just go for level two from the get-go.
Awesome.
But basically, that'll get me to the point where I am going to be ready to start looking at taking over the water plant and, um, uh, wouldn't necessarily need a DRC from outside anymore.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mark. Great.
Which brings me kind of down to the next one. Um, I'll touch on that a little further down. Uh, discharge season is coming. I like to call it discharge season, so between November first and April thirty first, we, um, dump our treated wastewater into the Long Tom, so that's right around the corner. Uh, don't have too much more to do in preparation for that. I just got some, uh, uh, pump tubing to change out, and then basically just plug in the chemicals and turn a couple valves on the first, and we're good to go. Um. Sorry, was there a question?
Nope, that was just me saying, sounds good.
Okay. So, kind of going back to taking over of systems, um, I have submitted a submittal to DEQ requesting to become the supervisory treatment collections and, um, treatment operator for the city of Monroe's wastewater treatment facilities. Um, so that basically, once that gets pushed through DEQ and approved, I will be the overall responsible for Monroe's wastewater system.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Excellent, that's correct.
Um, looking into a little bit of, uh, wastewater treatment upgrades. Uh, I was talking with Chuck over in Harrisburg, and we are looking into a probiotic two scrubber. Basically, it's a, um, uh, a little. Um. Microorganisms that we would dump into the lift station, and it is going to help us with our, um. Sludge is gonna help us with any greases, things like that. These little microorganisms just get in there and they eat all the, eat all the nasty stuff and help us, uh, produce a, a, a more quality, um, treated wastewater. I reached out to a company, uh, here in the state for a quote, and I have not heard back from them yet, uh, but this is something that Harrisburg uses, and it, uh, it shouldn't add too much more, uh, to our annual wastewater treatment, um, costs.
Cool.
And then on to, uh, storm and drainage. We, uh. And then on to uh, storm and drainage. We uh, are, I'm planning to get um, our catch basins cleaned again. We do it annually, uh, right around this time of year. Leaves start falling, starts raining a lot. Uh, get all the sludge and nasty gunk out of the bottom of the catch basins that accumulated over the last year. Um, with that, uh, I've been talking to TJ about, we were in the past doing um, not the last year or so, once a year, been doing street sweeping and we're trying to go from once a year to twice a year. So once in the fall and once in the spring for a good street sweeping. And is there anything else at the bottom of that?
Mark, for street sweeping, we have to rent, we have to rent the equipment, correct?
Correct. So we don't have any, any of the equipment to do the catch basin uh, cleaning or the street sweeping. So the last couple of years I've been contracting with a company called Midstate. Um, they're out uh, South Eugene over by Lane Community College.
Okay.
So they, they come out with their equipment and uh, take care of that stuff for us.
Okay.
I'm sure most of you have noticed the Reader Building is gone and the lot is vacant with just a bunch of stuff sitting out there. So here in the next couple of weeks, I plan to get out there and get uh, what remains kind of taken out of there. And then I, I asked Ron to um, run over the, the site of the old Reader Building with a large magnet, try and get any nails and screws that we could pick up, picked up. Um, I plan to do that one more time, but I also plan to get a couple loads of gravel dumped in there, spread out, and then we'll have that uh, opened back up for parking uh, across from City Hall. And last, we are also looking into um, replacing and upgrading our traffic safety equipment. So I'm sure most of you have known that in the past I've had to uh, borrow our barricades and cones and things from Harrisburg when we have events or whatnot. Um, and then all of our traffic safety cones are kind of hand-me-downs from Harrisburg and numerous other places. So it's uh, it's time we look at getting our own.
That'd be great.
Yep, that sounds good.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep. Any questions for me?
I have one.
Yep.
Um, the company for the storm drains and uh, swi- street sweeping?
Yes.
Do you go out and look for bids each year or do you just constantly go to the same one?
I can come on on that one. I've directed staff in all departments to get quotes on everything that we've had, um, any type of company worked for us previously on. So the street sweeping, sweep sweeping is one of those. We're also going to be comparing the cost associated with having somebody come out and do that work versus purchasing our own equipment and doing it in-house. And I'll be presenting counsel with a comparison of what those costs are, so that you can find direction on which way we should go following this year. This is a critical component of our T M D L, our total maximum daily load um, requirements to D E Q. So we say that we do it twice a year. We have to do it twice a year. Um, so we are going to get quotes on that. And if we stick with the same people, it'll be because they have the best service and prices.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark?
Lots of activity. Thanks for the cool update.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
A couple of things I'll note really quickly is that we've been prioritizing training significantly on training. Um, and so there are going to be a few more budget trainings that we send Dawn to over this coming year. Um, in addition, there are going to be some city recorder trainings that we are sending, excuse me, I said Shanon, but I meant Dawn. I was thinking Shanon because she's right here. And she will be attending some city recorder trainings over this coming year as well. Um, more importantly, I think what we're doing is adding some um, strategy and scheduling to what we do in-house. So both finance and public works have a calendar that they follow. It is available. You all can see it if you open up their calendars. Um, I can see it and they're able to follow along with what those monthly, weekly, quarterly and annual tasks are. So they don't come and catch us, you know, as they're just almost do. And uh, tho- those are the big pieces. I want to thank staff. They are really, really kicking butt right now.
Yeah, that sounds like it.
Absolutely. We have a, I know on the agenda we've got five dot four here is water wastewater infrastructure updates. Do we want, do we have a separate, who's addressing that one, I guess?
By Chuck. Chuck is feeling under the weather today, so I actually had a meeting with him this afternoon regarding some of these water wastewater update items. He looked, he told me, I'm not going to be there tonight. The, the big thing to let you guys all know is that we are continuing to put out our T T H M quarterly notices. You see those each quarter because we're required to test for them and let you all know, let the public know if we've exceeded T T H Ms during that three-month period. If we have, we write in that notice that we have. If we haven't, wonderful. We continue to do that on a quarterly basis until they tell us that we no longer need to. Chuck has in, has basically informed me that until we move to a different treatment type of facility, which is something that's forthcoming with the moratorium that we're potentially looking at, but most certainly updating our treatment system and getting a new water intake, we expect for those issues to be resolved and will be released from that quarterly requirement. Um, we're also working with the engineer and Chuck is supporting me in getting that R F P out for the intake. Those are the big pieces at the moment, other than the fact that we have set a deadline for Mark to take over in March. And so we had a big meeting with Chuck, Mark, um, and myself a couple of weeks ago and sketched out how long it would take dedicating some specific time so that Mark could actually get to the finish line with his training. So he's, like he said, he's baking that in on a weekly basis right now, making sure he gets to the end of that. And so at the end of March, we'll likely keep Chuck as a, potentially a consultant or somebody that can help us as Mark takes the reins and really takes the leadership.
That's great that we're going to retain Chuck.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to hear that as well. That's, yeah.
That'll be a council decision. Right now I'm saying that uh, really it's, it's a recommendation and I'm, I'm really glad to hear the support from you on that.
We need somebody for relief anyway.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we need somebody watching over those too because.
You don't have a microphone.
There's a, there's a lot of things that can be signed off on that. It would be good to have the expertise uh, where Chuck is involved, where Mark might not know and might not understand what he's getting so, getting himself involved in by signing.
How are our T T H M numbers looking lately? Are we trending positively?
No. So two things. We have had an exceedance in the last three-month period of time. We did, and we will be reporting on that at the end of October. Um, anybody can go on to uh, the Oregon Health Authority's uh, online public website and type in Monroe and see any time that one of those exceedances has occurred for any particular chemical um, or, or problem that could be in the water. Uh, one thing I'll, I'll mention is that we have a lot of, we, we have almost no control over whether the T T H M issue is going to occur or not. Uh, and, and largely it's, it's about what's inside of the water itself and the fact that we're trying to clean for it, we're trying to address it, we're trying to get that out of the water. We have to simply report to the public when it happens. So it, it will, you will see one on there at least.
I have, I have a question about the T T H M reporting. So can you maybe, maybe I didn't hear correctly, but uh, clarify or elaborate on managing the risk with the D E Q. I know we have the moratorium and I know that we're looking at getting a new treatment center. Um, but until that time, what's going to make them say that we don't need to report it anymore? Is it just, just, this is what we're, this is what our action plan is and just go based on that or actually have it be completed?
According to Chuck, because of the membrane filtration system that we have in our plant, it is not paired right for the type of water that we're sucking in.
Right.
And until we resolve that, we're going to have to continue to report on a quarterly basis. Because the threshold is that you have no T T H M exceedances over a period of time and then you get off of the naughty list.
Okay. And it's where we're testing too, which is problematic.
That is correct. And so, and as you know, Chuck has had some very, very uh, strong feelings about that. And I don't disagree with him being the subject matter expert. Hopefully you can convince them that he's, he's right. I think it has to do with, of course, which is the first customer and that being, I think that has to do with the, the treatment plan itself being the first customer is a challenge. Again, stepping outside of my lane here, so I, I will wait for Chuck or perhaps for Mark if he'd like to comment on any of those items you just addressed.
Okay. So it's, it's the realization of the action plan put in place before they'll consider not just, hey, this is what we plan on doing and then giving them updates.
Kind of. The corrective action plan is about fixing the system for capacity. Um, even if we fix capacity, we'd still have this problem.
Right.
Because of, of the type of treatment it is. So basically Chuck's saying until we switch that, we'll continue to have to do this because we're always going to have a T T H M exceedance during a quarter.
Right, yep.
As long as we have the membrane system.
The filtration system that we have currently.
Thank you.
Yeah. I wish it were a, a better answer.
It was knowledgeable, even if it's a bummer.
Okay, any other questions on water wastewater infrastructure? Okay, I guess we'll move on. Sheriff Van Arsdale, are you on, sir?
I am.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Fantastic. I just wanted, I just, I want to echo the, the city administrator. Um, the, the staff down there, Dawn, and everybody's doing great work and good luck to Mark on his level two and the D E Q certification. And that, that's awesome. Good work by everybody involved. That's cool. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, as you, you have the report there in front of you, you'll see that there were some citations written into your municipal court. Uh, we had a couple of arrests and we also had a paraglider.
Yes.
And injured their leg. I will tell you, the last time we had something like that happen down south, it didn't end quite as well. So uh, we'll, we'll take the broken leg. Um, I'm, 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 I'm all right with that. So um, while you guys are looking at that, we would, tomorrow at nine, I'll be presenting to the Board of Commissioners along with um, Chief Harvey from CPD, uh, Acting Chief Yon from OSU P D, uh, Chief Hardin from Albany Police Department. And then OSP couldn't make it, neither can Floma Police Chief. I'm not sure if Chief Gersky from Floma was going to be able to find somebody to sit in his seat. Um, but we'll be tomorrow at nine o'clock at the Board of Commissioners. If you can make it, cool. If you can't, it's still virtual option, so you can get online. Uh, I think it was like four years ago, maybe Chief Wise got us all together at the time. And it's a completely new group, so it's uh, it's, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see and hear uh, just kind of a legal update from all the different organizations. But the district attorney from Benton County is going to be there as well. And as an FYI, we, we do get together every couple of months, all of us, uh, and along with Lynn County Sheriff and the chiefs from Lynn County as well, in Lynn County. We just got to do an information sharing. It takes about two hours. Uh, but we, we just make sure that we're all in the same uh, sheet of music. Wednesday, we will be doing a funeral for a deputy in Lynn County who passed away, a sergeant uh, of cancer. And so uh, Wednesday, we will be, uh, the office can be pretty bare bones because we're going to be providing services uh, to Lynn County as well during the service. And then Friday is the big day. Yeah, right? So Friday, we'll be down, uh, we'll be down there and then in Monroe, we'll be in uh, Floma. We're going to be handing out candy at the trucker treat. I'm pretty excited about that as well. So um, any questions you might all have for me?
Okay.
Is October fourteenth referencing the bonfire that was at the city hall or is that something else? And what was the outcome of the?
So the, the threat was actually at the V F W, I believe.
Oh, it was here.
And it, and it, it kind of matriculated into some other places. And so we brought in Oregon, our University of Oregon has a, a, a dog specifically designed uh, to detect explosives. And so they came in and they did a sweep of the V F W and I think that they were asked to do the bus park as well by Croson uh, just because they were there. And then we had deputies in town um, all afternoon as well.
Got it. Thank you. I, and I'm sorry, I was mistaken. I thought it was City Hall and not the Legion Building, but I was just.
No, that's okay.
Building. Sorry about that.
That's all right. It's all good. It was kind of, it was kind of a lot of places all of a sudden and, and it's, it's perfectly understandable. I totally get that. So the concern is valid.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Any other questions, comments for the sheriff? Great time to pick his brain. He's right here.
Do we, sorry, I do have a question. Do we get many paragliders? Because I did see a paraglider about a month ago also.
I, I, I think actually, I think we do in the middle Lamont Valley in general. I, I don't know why that is. Um, I know that there've been several that have crashed and then some that have ended poorly for the pilots um, or, or their, their um, partners. But uh, yeah, we do, I, I know that there's a lot in Lynn County. I don't know if the, I don't know enough about the air and, and hot air and how those stay afloat. I, I don't know enough about it, but I know the Willamette, uh, the, the Willamette River is pretty, uh, it's a scenic view and they try to fly the uh, river quite a bit as well.
We've had some motorized paragliders go over too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I heard about a month ago.
I don't, I don't like, I don't like, like jets, let alone unless something with a lawnmower motor on it. I'm telling you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions for Sheriff? Okay, I guess we're ready to cut you loose, sir.
All right, we'll see you Friday.
Yep, see you then. Thank you. Uh, the financials are next up on the agenda. So that should be in your package.
Where the espresso, it's not open.
Packet includes a set of transactions. So the transaction journal covering from Sep- September first to September thirtieth. That's followed by the treasurer's report, which includes fund totals for each one of the major funds within the budget.
Don't you see down here? You got your assistant. He's paying for real good lessons.
That's probably here.
Always.
You'll find account totals. Fund investments totals by account. And also there are, of course, the outstanding vouchers as part of the treasurer's report. We also have the accounts payables that are paid between ten one and ten seven. So everything that we've had over the last several weeks.
Ooh, where did the roto rooter happen?
That was the pipe over, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still on, over by Kelly Street, uh, where we had the issue with sewage coming up onto the road.
Oh.
And so we had to have that rooted out. We discussed how we, we got the pipe open back up, but we're going to have some I N I issues, of course, as a result of that.
Isn't there a willow tree? It's kind of close to that.
I think that's right. I think that's right.
They did find uh, some roots when they were doing the video.
Yeah, that willow tree is probably doing approaching.
It could be the willow. They do move fast. They are fast moving.
Yeah, and they, they do dig your fights.
Yep, absolutely.
Concrete or whatever.
Yes, we got some good pictures of the, of the roots that are coming in through a hole. Right? And so that's the big issue is we're coming into the rainy season. We'll start to see some additional impact on that system as a result of those things that we know and don't know about.
Can we sleeve that one?
That is unknown.
I think Chuck was talking about putting that kind of balloon thing in.
Oh, yeah.
You can if it's, I mean, again, this is me stepping outside of my lane, but if it, if it's an old clay or concrete pipe, it may take a different approach.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I stepped away, used the restroom real quick. Um, I think we could sleeve it, but it would take a, a an expert to come out and actually thoroughly look through it to see if that is something that is possible.
Thank you.
I see we've got uh, pre-grading of the parking area over on Dragon Drive, over by the grade school, I'm assuming.
Mark, the pre-grading, was that over by the elementary school? Is that correct?
Correct. Yep, we had that uh, that regraded. Now we're waiting to talk with the school to see how we should proceed with the parking situation over there.
Okay. All right.
Is that the area adjacent to the church?
Correct.
There's, yeah. We were going to do parallel parking. We promised them like a year and a half ago now.
Oh, where the trailer hitches stick out over the.
Yeah, and they redid that whole sidewalk. Somebody came in and redid that and they want, asked us to take care of that so it would be protected.
Um, out of curiosity, how is, how are delinquent water bills going?
Dawn, I'll let you take that.
We had forty-two this month. I mean, our, our method is effective. Unfortunately, there are some people that just can't help it. They get, they, they get paid a certain time of the month and that's when they have to pay. But most people communicate at this point in time. They know that if they communicate with me, let me know when they anticipate payment that I at least won't have to. Like if they're going to be a day later than what we need payment for, I'm not going to shut them off. I try to work with them if I can.
Thank you.
Communication is key. If they don't communicate with me, we go through the procedure, give them a five day, 24 hour notice. Uh, but yeah, there were 42 this month. That's pretty consistently over 40.
That's rough. How, how about the big one downtown?
Uh,
I'll take that one, Don. You're talking the commercial and residential, correct? Yes. So that one, we are awaiting a resolution. I believe that building is nearly about to sell.
Oh.
And the prospective purchaser is very well aware that the lien will carry forward with the purchase if it's not cleared beforehand. I have agreed to waive the fees associated with that. If they're willing to pay the principal amount that has accrued over these years to close out that account, but that individual would have to do so, of course, before the sale moves forward. I am awaiting a response from them. Um, so far they have verbally agreed to that, but they haven't come in to make it so.
Got it. Okay.
Um, I have a question. Are we aware of anybody that's being hit with a no paycheck during this government shutdown? That could possibly, if it carries on, will not be able to pay their water bill because of the shutdown. And if so, are we prepared to like just carry their balance for the meantime?
We're not aware of anybody at the moment who has come forward to tell us that they are, somebody is subject to no paycheck because of the shutdown. We do take hardship into account. So on every one of these instances, unless they're a frequent flyer, I do have a conversation with Don about the fact that we're going to send out the five day notice, but hey, here's some information we happen to know or something that they shared with us. How should we handle it? We are looking at a case by case basis. So we're not looking to shut anybody off just on a hard and fast rule. Um, if somebody does come to us and tell us they're not getting their paycheck, that's something that would absolutely, um, be part of, of the calculus. Am I going to, you know?
You have it written down in policy for hardship.
We do not.
I thought we did at one time.
I don't see anything in the code regarding hardships. Um, it may be that there was an ordinance at some point in time that didn't get wrapped into the code. I have looked pretty closely at ordinances. Um, it's possible that I missed it.
It might not have been an ordinance. It might have just been an operating policy.
To my knowledge, it doesn't exist, but I'd be, I'd, I'd definitely like to know if anybody can point me towards.
First time it's been mentioned ever since.
The only time I'm aware of that that happened, Counselor Myers, is, uh, during COVID, but it could have happened prior to that as well.
No, it's happened before.
Okay.
I can personally vouch for that.
There needs to exist a policy. I have a policy in front of you this evening regarding water and we can only handle these in bite sized chunks. But I do strongly believe that that's something that we should have in policy.
Okay. I think we should also put it on the bill. If you're suffering a hardship, please call us and then have them have some sort of proof of a hardship. They can't just say, yeah, I have a hardship.
Well, the way, the way it was wrong that I'm talking about is you can have one hardship, but you have, you couldn't have another hardship with it's like. There, there was a timeline on it.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Here's what we'll do.
And like I said, I don't know if it was an ordinance or.
For people if they are in hardship.
I understand.
Is one.
On all your bills, like your credit cards and all loans and whatever, um, when you go online and pay them, they all say at the top of the page, if you are affected and have a hardship because of it, let us know. And they do show in their policies that you have to have proof of the hardship. There is no limit. You just have to have proof of it.
Bring this to a work session for council to review. We can begin with some staff recommended proposals as well as some reflecting on what other jurisdictions do. I think that having a policy in place is a great idea. And then we absolutely could reference that policy on the bill.
It, it would be helpful to have guidance so we know what's going on and our people, our citizens can know that we're available to help.
Absolutely. We can do that.
I know like water, water line breaks, especially if someone drives over your water line and breaks it, no fault of yours. I got a $700 water bill.
Really?
Yeah. I was gone for a weekend. Somebody drove over my water line, broke it on the side of the meter. And I had a swimming pool when I got home.
Yeah.
About some similar instances with our policy this evening.
Yeah. I mean, I had to pay, but it was like, oh, interest.
Yeah.
Right. All right. Well, I'm going to circle you guys back to the financials. I'm looking for a motion on this question. Okay. Go for it.
Uh, treasurer's report, outstanding vouchers, page five. Not trying to be nitpicky. Um, this pot or hammer drill bit for park bleacher replacement. Was that part of that? Was that the park bleachers that got damaged in the ice storm?
We're using the FEMA funds for that. Yes.
Okay. So that's come, that money's coming out of the FEMA funds.
Correct.
Correct.
249. All right. Perfect. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Gas station.
Yep. The old gas station.
Okay.
Remember we're supposed to be opening some venue down there, aren't they?
That's correct.
Light music. Clicker.
It's closer to opening.
Pretty exciting for Monroe.
Yeah.
It is open. She's down there.
Okay. I'm inside. Still interested in a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. Hey, any other comments or questions? Are we ready to vote?
Ready.
Okay. Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Evans.
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Winder.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is fund accounting software. Looks like we have a presentation maybe.
We do indeed.
All right.
Go ahead and get this queued up. Uh, Don will be presenting.
And if you could share your screen again too, that way.
I'm queuing it up right now.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Just let me know when you're ready to move to the next slide, Don.
Yeah. Just go ahead and go to the next. Um, so essentially we have three different software companies. We're looking at Springbrook, which is our current software. Um, we are very familiar, familiar with the software. They have great customer service, but uh, and they do have a lower cost than most others, but they are very old, very clunky. Um, our auditors are not very familiar with it. And then when I say clunky, so when I go in to post a payment, there are times where it will not pull all of our appropriate bars codes. So we have to go back to a prior similar entry, get the BaaS code, go back in. Um, there's just, there's additional steps that don't need to be there because the software is not um, as user friendly as others may be. And I've also been, it's been brought to my attention this past few years that it's more of a Washington based software. And so it isn't really uh, beneficial for us to use. The bars codes don't really mean anything for Oregon. Um, they're Washington based purely. It's how we enter our expenses and revenues. But they're difficult for the auditors to follow when they're going in and we need to make journal entries or we're trying to explain why we have um, different funds with these different bars. Cause it's just, it's very difficult for them to follow. Next. So Casell came highly recommended by, uh, the Harrisburg accountant, uh, Kathy. Um, she said they do a great job with reporting, uh, very user friendly. They're also, I guess, very, um, on top of customer service. They are quite a bit more per, for the annual cost. Um, the setup is not as expensive as our third competitor, but the annual cost is about 10,000 more, I believe. Um, I do think that this could reduce time, not only in the audit, but our everyday tasks. I'm guessing by about a third, it's very difficult to know though, until we've experienced a different software. All I can really do with this is, is see what they've given us as far as a, um, tutorial or overview so far and compare to what we have now. Uh, go ahead and do the next TJ. And then Tyler Tech, um, they're a little more similar to what we're paying annually right now, but there's a significant startup fee. So for the 43,000 is a startup amount, whereas Casell was, I believe, 19,000 for setup. Uh, however, their annual fees are quite a bit less. Um, and they're very comparable to, uh, Springbrook as far as the way they look in the programming. Um, on the following slide, it will show the comparison of all three. So Springbrook, which is our current one at the top there on the left, Casell, which is the one that came recommended by Harrisburg and I, so far from what I've seen, I like to sell. It may be a little more difficult to pick up on the way they um, code their items, but they have a lot of different tie-ins that can produce some really helpful reports with budgeting and just quarterly check-ins. And then Tyler Tech, um, that, that's the one that's similar in the annual fees to what we have now. And they also have a similar setup. But from what I've experienced so far, just getting quotes and everything, they're very slow to respond, which I don't like.
And then to wrap this up, what I wanted to do for you was give you an understanding of where we'd be over the course of a 10 year period of time. If we were to bring on one of these other tools compared to Orange Springbrook, which is where we are right now, I wanted to tell you some of the assumptions that I've made and these are assumptions. Um, so first off, we're looking at an hourly rate of around $30 an hour. We know that we're spending somewhere, this is again, an estimate, but I think we're spending somewhere around 600 hours a year in Springbrook. Um, that, that accounts for 15 to 20% or so of the amount of hours that the finance person is spending in total on all finance related tasks. I'm guessing that between a third to a half of those hours would be reduced as a result of not having to spin your wheels, looking for how to produce reports or get the auditors, what they need, coordinate with me on a lot of different things, the way that these reports come out simply don't make sense. And so Don and I are constantly trying to find a way to make this tool work for the way that we should be doing things. So what you're looking at here is the orange line Springbrook. If we continue on a 4% annual increase, which is what we're seeing per year. And I also made the assumption that all of these tools are going to have a 4% escalation. Um, so given all of those factors and also given the $43,000 startup cost versus the $19,000 startup cost, that's where you see the blue and the green line intersecting. So the break even point would be for where the green is more expensive starting, but it becomes less expensive over time somewhere around year 2.5.
Can, I'm sorry, can you share which one is green and which one is blue? My, I think I'm like partially.
Not very clear. So the, the green one is in the middle. The blue one is, is the top one.
Thank you.
And orange is Springbrook, what we have right now. It's interesting if you look at which lines look parallel to one another, right? Cause then you can kind of get a sense of Springbrook versus Casell. Those are very much parallel to one another. They escalate and continue over time in the same way. I think the gap, what you're getting there is going to be a significantly better product when we bring to council reports that you're seeing on a regular basis. When we work with the auditors, what I did not include is the reduced costs that the auditors are going to be billing us for, because they don't have to weed through all of these complicated reports. So I think there's a lot that will close that gap, right? The, the differences and differences there. If you look at the actual, um, graph here. My recommendation is also that of, of Don's that we consider looking at Casell. Um, this is, and excuse me, Casell is the blue one, not the green one. My apologies. If we, what, what I really want to recommend that you all do is ask questions right now. Find out what it is that you need to know more about. What is it that you would like Dawn to come back and tell you about? What questions do you have for her? And then also for us as staff, so that we bring this back in upcoming, um, work sessions and council meetings. We can discuss with more clarity of which way we're going.
Okay. Sorry. So Casell is the middle one.
I made a mistake.
Oh, okay.
I was completely wrong.
Okay. Sorry. So Casell is the top.
It is.
Top line.
Casell is the top one. I was completely wrong and I misdirected it as a result of my error. My apologies. Casell is the top one. Um, Tyler Tech is the middle.
Got it. Does Tyler, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Um, thank you. Does Tyler Tech have the, the organ codes built into it? Do we know that yet?
You know, that we don't really know. My experience is Casell is really agnostic with state by state. I had never heard of a state specific accounting tool. I had now also never heard of Springbrook before. Um, so coming on board, I've learned a lot about this tool. Apparently they're Washington based. I don't believe that any of these other tools are state specific. Don, are you aware of that?
I'm not, but that is definitely something I can check into.
Okay.
Washington likes to have their own rules.
Washington. Washington in California.
Counselor Evans.
Um, did you check to see, um, if Harrisburg and any of the other local cities that have it? If they've needed, um, support and how quick did they get the support?
Don.
And I do know that Kathy, so Kathy in Harrisburg really likes, um, Casell. She said they're amazing to work with. And on the other hand, Junction City uses Tyler Tech and they didn't go into as much detail, but they are, they've been satisfied with the, the programming so far.
Okay. So their response has been quick and really clear and helpful.
Casell has my experience with Tyler Tech, and this is on the sales team end so far, um, is that they haven't been as quick to respond and they have to go through a few different channels to get the answer, which to me, I mean, it may be representative of what their customer service team looks like, and it may not. It may just be their sales team.
It's to sell entire tech. You have them both showing the same savings and hours? Is that true?
I made an assumption that both of them would give us the, an equal amount of savings because I, I have no way to know whether one would be better than the other in that regard. So I had to think of them as equals in that regard until I know different.
Yeah.
So do we know how long Harrisburg has you've been using Casell? And do we know how long Junction City has been using Tyler Tech?
That's something I can ask both of them.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd, I'd like to know like what modules. I know you gave the presentation last week and it kind of identified some of the modules, but I don't use accounting systems, but in the systems that I do use and we bring in new systems, one of the choke points, you know, six months down the road after you've used it for a while is reporting. Um, how can we make our own reports or do we have able to access them and say, hey, we'd like to have this information show up on a report and are they going to be willing to help us with that? Are they going to show us how to create our own report so that we can move and groove and, and actually get what we want when we want it in a reasonable timeframe? That's always issues that I've had in my career. So if we could get clarification on reporting and, and as our needs change, are they able to adapt with us?
Yeah, I'm familiar with Casell. Casell does do that. And one of the things that I wasn't aware of that they had showed us during our tutorial is that you could actually give access, a certain level of access and permission to the public, to counselors, to go in and run reports that you're interested in sort of customizing and seeing for your own benefit. So when you're coming to a meeting and comparing apples to apples on something, you can kind of do your own drill down and investigation. The public would be able to access that. Of course, we'd have all of that, um, on our end and we can run all of the customization.
So they'll let individual users do a slice and dice of what they want.
That's one option. Yeah. There's one module that they had presented.
I assume that's what the data itself locked. So no one could change.
Yeah, it's a view only. Absolutely view only. And it's scaled down in terms of what's viewable.
I know that when we last talked about the, these three systems, kind of like a very top level um, perspective, like you had talked about training, the different kinds of training each one offers. I don't think we receive any training from Springbrook. They're probably more of like a troubleshoot since they're remote, but um, you did say Casell offers great training. Um, have you or Dawn learned anything about Tyler Tech? I know that they've not been very responsive, but do you know what their training looks like?
Don, you want to speak to that?
So I don't know what their actual training would look like. Um, that is something I can ask them and get the answer of two. I do know that when we were uh, speaking to the lady that was doing the Casell demo, we kind of had her tell her to stop showing us so much. Um, they definitely take their time and go into detail, but I can look into Tyler Tech and see what their training would entail.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, as much information as we can get for
Yeah.
both Tyler Tech and Casell, just so we can be fair about our.
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
If we can get that, you know, side by side comparison, everything.
Yeah. So my, my next plan would be to put together a slide where we're looking at each topic and giving you a comparison of what each one of these tools. and giving you a comparison of what each one of these tools provides.
The side-by-side table.
Exactly. So I'm hearing support time? Are they state-specific? How long has Harrisburg been working with Casell and how long has Junction City been working with Tyler? Their reporting modules as well as their training.
Yeah.
And pros and cons for each.
Of course. Yeah, absolutely.
And I'd also like to understand like the customization, what can we customize? Cause that's always a choke point. I don't know for the systems that like uh, six months in, you need, you need to be able to customize based on what they've just dumped on your, you know, your computer and like, this doesn't necessarily work. Are they able to customize with us and like six months, a year, a year and a half, two years down, down the road? Because that's when these things come up.
Yeah, then you want to be able to add on functions.
Is do their upgrades override our customizations?
Oh yes, that is a very good point.
Yeah, true. I didn't think about that.
Oh yes. Otherwise you have to have, pull them off into a separate area.
Back them up. Yep.
Back them up.
Yep.
Could we also clarify with Tyler Tech and Casell, how much the price increases or has been increasing on average? Maybe, maybe they're not increasing four percent. Maybe it's two percent, maybe it's six percent.
You're absolutely right. I made an assumption on that.
And that's a fair assumption.
I know it's four percent for Springbrook, so I just extrapolated that out.
Right, to make it even.
But I will, I'll ask the other two or yeah, we'll, we'll make sure.
Thank you. And I think that was a fair assumption to make based on Springbrook. It just, you know, just to confirm one way or the other.
And I'll be clear, Dawn will be the one to ask that. Make sure that that happens.
Okay, any other questions you want to?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, on that, now I'm going to take off. If you guys have any further questions for me, please reach out. Um, I should be reachable by cell, but I'm putting kiddos down for bed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback on that.
I guess on your training end too, is the training cost, I think is what you're looking into?
Yes.
To, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
And what that.
Well, and then I'm reading it.
So you want to know about cost and what it is.
Exactly. As they say, their training will take place at Casell. But you could have.
It's probably remote, like.
And that type of work is kind of beneficial when you're actually seen in that way sometimes.
Clicking on a screen.
Okay, so let's see here. Oh, many assignments. That's the next fun topic on the agenda.
Okay, so I have a sheet here that I am going to fill out as we move, as we go on the fly. I know a lot of you sort of kind of knew your committee assignments and provided some information based on what you thought you had. Some of you were, were uncertain and that's okay. Um, what I have right now is a table that just helps us get there. So for economic developments, I have Mayor Sheets who started in January of twenty twenty-one. Um, term ending, of course, in, in twelve thirty-one to twenty twenty-six. Um, he is the chair. Harry, mid twenty twenty-three was when your term began. And then Counselor Williams, uh, May of twenty twenty-three was when your term began. Anybody else on the Economic Development Committee that you're aware of? Okay, that makes sense because if you have four members on a committee, you've had a, you have a quorum of the council. So that's what we want. This looks right. Do any of the current members want to discuss remaining on that committee? So the, one of the things that we want to make sure we're doing is putting on the website when your term ends. And so what we'll go ahead and do is recertify that term tonight and state what that end term will be. So the public's aware of what that is. Um.
Should it be our council term or since that is open to the public? That wouldn't matter.
I think, um, we should discuss that. I think, I, I don't know when you all have been revisiting committees, if it's on a regular basis or not. And if not, then we should really think about setting a date. It could be when term ends. It could absolutely be when your term ends. Are you wanting to do that rather than having a set date?
Yep. I think that's what we do generally. We just kind of redo when the terms come up again.
Okay.
I think that's easiest.
So I can simply just peg the end dates to when all of your terms end? And then we'll revisit those seats and vacancies if and when necessary. Do we want to have any type of, and we talked about this before, I think the answer was no. But um, where terms, you have a maximum number of terms. A lot of cities do that if you've got a lot of people in your city.
For like three terms.
Right, but the challenge with that in a small city is that you kind of have a conveyor belt, right? And people go out the door, out the exit door, and there's no way for them to come back in. You've lost a person who could potentially be on that committee over the long term.
I think it's because it's so hard to keep seats filled.
Yeah.
It would be, yeah.
We're not big enough to have a good enough rotation to keep the booty going.
Good. So Personnel and Finance, I wanted to discuss this. One of the things that we had done previously, Counselor Ray, we had discussed bringing you on to the Personnel and Finance Committee. One of the things I didn't think about when we were discussing that was that having four counselors on a committee does create a quorum of the council. And so we really can't have four members on this committee. Um, Counselor Winder, I know that you are the chair, but I also know, as I understand it, that you may be moving away and leaving your position. So that would actually open that vacancy. I'd very much like to just automatically know that Counselor Ray is coming in to fill that vacancy, maybe not his chair, unless he wants to. But that's, that's.
I will.
As, as potentially chair?
Yes, that's, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I ducked that one.
So what I'll do here is I'll type in um, Brian Ray, and that's going to be, to be determined based on when and if Counselor Linder leaves us. There might be a surprise when you get to stay, who knows? No.
I will still maintain my house here in town. I don't think I'll be living in it full-time.
Right on. Um, Parks Advisory. I have Counselor Cutherson as the um, chair. I don't know when that term started. We know, of course, when it's going to end based on when your term ends. And I also have Mayor Sheets, uh, January twenty-one, of course, to this coming end term. I don't know if any other counselors have been on this committee in the past. I know we have some new counselors too.
Um, there hasn't been any other counselors on that committee. But we were going to have um, Counselor Evans be on there um, as, and then put beautification kind of under that. We could kind of run it together for right now.
Is that still how you're feeling about that, Counselor Evans?
Um.
I know you were at, were you at the last one? I thought you were.
I was.
I was remote, so I wasn't sure.
I don't know, because you and I were talking about the beautification in your office.
Yes, and so one of the things we talked about is how this committee really is going to be looking at a lot of beautification-related efforts.
Parks, that, right?
Well, I think what we need to do is talk after today. There will be another discussion. Do all of these committees still meet the intent of what it is we're trying to do? Um, Parks Advisory Committee has focused a lot on what do we do with our parks? But that's kind of static. We don't have big changes happening on a regular basis. We have things that need to be discussed on.
So parks and beautification.
Right, and so the, the assumption there would be that it would be like eighty, ninety percent beautification and ten percent parks. And we may discuss if that even, if we continue looking at parks at all in the long term. But I think in the short term, rather than creating another committee, folding beautification into that. And again, having it be the primary focus. And council will be the one to determine if we make any changes on committees.
And TJ, we had talked about splitting the Personnel and Finance Committee into two.
We did.
I, I think it makes sense.
And that's another one of those things. Right now, we're going to nail down what is and what exists and what we're going to put on the website for terms and individuals. And then as another push in the near future, we'll talk about each committee, what we want that committee to be. And that conversation should really start from within that committee as a recommendation to council.
Got it.
Yeah, it's Personnel and Finance are actually split.
We've, we've had a big discussion about that. One of my questions coming on board was how did we, how did this get here? How did we get to here? I'm sorry?
You can put me on that committee.
Okay.
Um, with everybody understanding, I won't be able to attend anything in the near future. Surgery on Wednesday.
Oh, I hope it goes well.
I was typing.
Thanks for volunteering to be on a, a committee.
Got Teams on your phone?
Okay.
So we've got our three, we got our three members on that one. That's wonderful.
Awesome.
And let me just confirm, Counselor Cutherson and, and Mayor Sheets, you're, you're remaining on this committee?
Correct.
Will you have me?
You're on it, whether you like, you're on every committee. So I'm not sure what you're worried about.
Ordinance Committee.
So. So ordinance actually was the entire council.
It was.
Yeah, it was the entire council originally.
So we can't have that.
We cannot have that?
No.
We can't have.
Oh, we thought it was kind of like a, we thought it was like an ad hoc committee, similar to budget committee, where everybody just comes together and talks about compliance.
If you have, if you have four or more people at the city council meeting, that is called a city council meeting. And public meeting law has that requirement. Um, so no, we have to have three or fewer, and then the goal though, is to have people from the community on those committees as well. And by the way, that's a good way to just rope people into a budget committee as well. Which I know is one of the big challenges. We'll be talking about all the strategies out there. Um, I don't know what we were doing with Ordinance Committee. I don't know the last time we met. I have to assume it's we were looking at our current ordinances and making recommendations about what we should do. I'll also mention that I believe I'm the third full-time city administrator, Mark, uh, with Hanbaum being the first one in like twenty seventeen. It may be that this ordinance committee existed back when we had part-time people and a need for city council to be heavily involved in administrative-related decisions like what kind of ordinances are we bringing forward to the council to consider?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yes, that's what happened.
And isn't it actually the city administrator's job to come up with recommendations for ordinances to bring to the city council?
Well, I think, I think members of the ordinance committee also reviewed existing ordinances, maintained and updated and implemented them as needed. So a lot of our ordinances were probably based on some weird event that happened once in the seventies. Yep. And then never got updated. So yes, but also.
We have some really old ordinances.
It could be people with grudges on others that say, oh, we need a law so they can't do this.
That certainly happened with the previous mayor.
Yeah.
One thing I'll say is your inclination, I think, was correct. When you created the ordinance committee and had the whole council on it, you were thinking absolutely right. But that should happen in a work session for a city council meeting, where I would bring forward recommendations for ordinances or a review of ordinances, some of which we've already looked at, many of which we still have to look at that I've identified as challenges.
Right.
Um, and then the whole council can review those and make decisions moving forward. My recommendation is that we perhaps consider getting rid of the ordinance committee to focus on other issues.
I don't think anyone's going to miss it.
I, I think it'll be fine. I think our, yeah. I think it, we, we were trying to have it serve its purpose at the time.
Yeah.
But um, I don't, I think there's a lot of things that we're all going to be able to change upcoming.
And I think we made a lot of changes, the ordinances, and I don't know that they actually got codified.
Right, or, or that they're being enforced at all. I know that, that's why I'm on city council is because of ordinances and upholding ordinances.
Well, we were told they were codified. We were told they were sent in. We were told they were codified. And then recently, again, the sheriff has come back and said that they weren't. So I don't know what happened with that. So anyway.
But we have an estimate.
We have lots of stories like that.
Got it.
Let's just repeat that. We were told.
Yeah.
Oh, one less committee I have to worry about.
Yay. Oh, sad.
Whatever.
We're going to go for another one here.
Okay. So here's Public Works. Um, right now, we have Counselor Cutherson as a chair and Mayor Sheets, um, who is on the committee. Very similar to Ordinance Committee. We have a competent and capable Public Works lead. That Public Works lead meets with me on a bi-weekly basis and we coordinate what our efforts are. I feel like he's doing an excellent job. And I also feel that with the reports that he'll be providing you and continuing to provide you, you're going to get the information that you need. And as a council, you'll get to ask the questions that are relevant and provide the direction that you think needs to be provided. My suggestion is that we consider directing our efforts towards more important things and consider removing the Public Works Committee.
Yes.
It probably was.
It was. It, it, it's, at this point, I don't think it's necessary at all. And I, we don't need to be in the way of them. We don't need to take another space of time and take them away from other things they're doing and act like we know what other focuses they need to have. They have enough on fire in our little city with things going on that they've got. They have direction to move. They don't need somebody else sticking their nose in their business.
It was created because there was conflict between the CA and Public Works.
Correct.
And so that was created just to kind of smooth the water, so to speak. And so I don't think we need that.
I mean, I went to a couple of those meetings and there were quite a few committee members from the, from our community on there.
There, yes, there's a lot of people that wanted to be involved and wanted to know what was going on.
Cause they're concerned about our water system, right?
No, there's more than that.
There's a lot. There's concern about the roads. There's a lot. But to that point, it gave other things that we're pulling Public Works from doing. We only have two Public Works guys. They can't focus on fifty different things at once right now. And they need to be focused on water, focused on getting their certification, focused on what we've got going in the city as well.
Yeah.
Um, people can bring their complaints. People can come to city council and let us know. And it's not that we don't want to keep people from having input. It's just that there's only so much that two people can do.
It's not a good use of their time.
It's also important to mention, um, in speaking with Mark about this committee, I wanted his feedback before I made recommendations to council. He informed me that he really wasn't asked by the city administrator to attend those Public Works meetings on a regular basis. He would ask, should I be there? And he'd say, no, don't be there. And so only one or two of them towards the end was he present. So if you did have this committee, I'd recommend having your Public Works guy there, right? But I think it really comes down to what I'm hearing, that there was some, something going on that led to this to be created.
Yeah.
Gee, I wonder why.
Just as long as, as the community understands that they have, and you know, a way to reach us with the new website or however they, they want to contact the city to address concerns. Because there were, there were other concerns besides the water.
Yeah, I can appreciate.
Potholes, I mean, some stop sign issues. I mean, you know, they, they, they did have some, some good input, at least in the two meetings that I attended as a community member.
Absolutely. And you know, we do see every once in a while, a complaint or a question about those types of things. That's the kind of stuff I'm going to continue to ask Mark to include in his reports, very similar to what the sheriff's office is doing. I want to make sure you're hearing about those things. And so if you think it's something that you want us to come back and respond to, we can do that in a work session or in a council meeting. Um, I, I also think that if there's something that's really critical, Mark will talk to you about it and ask me to put it as an agenda item.
And I think it can be addressed without having to have a committee meeting. It's just like with the parking. That was addressed through planning. Um, and so there's different things and they were addressed in different ways as well, even though they were brought up in the meetings.
I'm going to recommend a council action on this one because there's been enough discussions. I want to recommend that you potentially, if it's up to you, if you want to do this, but have a vote on whether or not you think this committee should remain once you've had all of your discussions this evening.
Well, yeah, um, can I make one comment? I think Public Works, to, to leave your question there, we can actually publish that we're going to have a work session specifically on Public Works and ask the, the community to come in on. And we could plan that once a quarter. Um, or however, however often we think we need to have it.
We can also do town hall meetings on.
Yeah, we could do a town hall, but we, you know. Either way.
Yeah, topics with topic specific.
Yes, specific topic, and that's what we're going to cover.
Absolutely, we could do that.
Yeah, that way, if you just say we have a work session, a lot of people, oh, I don't know what to talk about, so.
One of the things that will help me kind of let, let this go is, is if, and when Mark's report was awesome, it was really great. But I realized that this is kind of a new process for us. It would be great, as you mentioned, that we have the calendar that looks forward to what these, these different cadences are for these different events that we have to do. If we could see, you know, four months in advance, what the next things that are coming up on, so that if we're asked about it in our community, we are able to speak on it. We know it's coming up. Um, that would just give us, that would give me, help me be more proactive.
Absolutely. One thing I'll mention is that, um, if any of you would like assistance on how to do this, come see me. But now that you have an Outlook account, you can add any calendar from any employee or other person that's in the organization. Um, so you could go find Mark's Public Works calendar and you could look at it and see where he is on any given day, right? But also see uh, three months, six. But also see three months, six months, a year out. All of that is now populated on there. What he'll be doing and when. It includes streets. It includes doing that outfall cleanup. Everybody thought it looked really nice down by the river. He's gonna do that every year, right? You can see those things coming up. So that is possible.
Great. If I could just get it in the report, that would be even better for me because then it would be one, I'm just too busy.
Hearing though, is that it would be nice to maybe get a snapshot of what's coming in the month ahead.
Yeah.
In Mark's report.
Yeah, and also understand what the community has input on too, right? Like, you know, when you're at the pizza joint and you get stopped, it's nice to be able to have talking points.
Always, yeah.
Absolutely. And the other thing that you mentioned is that it would be nice if the community could respond or write emails or questions to you directly. I know we talked about it before, but just to plug it, Civic Plus on their website has a tool for them to contact each one of you individually. So whoever their favorite councillor is, they can just write a question and it goes right to your email inbox.
You're the favorite councillor.
Yeah, that's been an issue because I've had lots of people email me and I haven't got my, any of their emails in the last four years.
Right?
I haven't got any from anybody personally and I get very few.
It's working. Right, your email?
I think it's working.
Okay. I think it is.
I don't know if you're getting mine. When I send them back.
Company computer, I can't get on. So I had a question. We talked about personnel and finance. Are we gonna go ahead and split them?
So I was gonna mention, I appreciate.
My recommendation to, to council for personnel and finance, you have a budget committee. And I want to talk about finance by itself for a moment. You have a budget committee and that budget committee really should be taking a budget that includes granular level items. So I need this piece of equipment. We need to do this work. We need to hire these contractors, listing out in a spreadsheet all of the costs that we expect to have over the year, plus contingencies of about 10 to 15% for each one of those buckets. And then you approve that budget and staff goes and annex that. And we tell you every month how we're spending that money. A finance committee, to my mind, existed because I know for a fact that budget committee didn't have that level of detail from our prior city administrator. We didn't go through the level of detail of what publics need, public works needs in detail, so that you all knew what was coming up. Finance committee, I think, was put into place to add a little bit greater level of oversight on what city administration is doing because there was no great information going into the budget and no good communication during the year. That could be an incorrect assumption. That is just me gleaning.
I think it's a fair assumption. I think the previous person just didn't have budget management as a, a part of their resume. And we didn't have a Dawn at the time. And yeah, we just didn't have that skill set on the staff at the time.
Councillor Myers, you remember before all of this, they were, personnel and finance were together then too.
Yeah, and it, I, I was actually the chair and I said, I don't think they should be together.
Same remember this.
People who you can talk to about finance, on personnel, you can't ask some of the public there. So they should not.
And it's important to note, one of the things that we've talked about is all committees are public bodies. You must notice those committee meetings and the public must be able to be present during all of them. So that becomes an issue on its own. I come with a strong public budgeting background. That's what I did for my education. I am providing Dawn with the education she needs, both one-on-one together, as well as sending her trainings, so that she can become trained and educated on everything that the state requires of her. I feel strongly that we're heading in the right direction. I don't know if you want to keep that finance committee meeting.
It seems redundant. I don't think we need it. And we also have not met to discuss finance in probably two years.
That was my understanding as well.
So we've only discussed personnel issues.
Yeah, and I think it's helpful to have the personnel committee. I think that we've had the opportunity to discuss a lot of things that are really critical and important in terms of staff policy. I found it to be helpful in doing my job. So I think keeping personnel in place could make a lot of sense. Perhaps separating finance could be a smart decision. Again, I want to really recommend that council take actions if you're going to be changing those committee structures or dissolving the committees this evening, as we've discussed.
There was a complaint hierarchy too, that the Personnel and Finance Committee Chair, like I said, it should just been Personnel, had a hierarchy of who they can, made a personnel complaint to. First was the CA, and if there was a problem in that direction, then it was the mayor. If there was a problem in that direction, then it was Personnel Committee Chair.
Correct.
So it's, it's one of the things that we'll be discussing. It's really important to note some of the Oregon revised statutes that talk about the separation between a legislative body and the administrative body. So while council is fully within their right to ask questions of staff, to help them in your business of supporting the public, what the council does not do is get involved in day-to-day business. That is, really you have one employee. You have me. And I have four employees. That's how that really works. We're not trying to close off communication, but it's important that we understand where that separation exists.
Yeah, and I think, I think it, we all understood that. We agreed to that. We accepted that. I think with the last situation, we needed to have a, a communication system outside of the CA because the CA was part of the problem.
And there were extenuating circumstances to your point that necessitated that.
Yeah, so we would like to maintain something like that, I would think. If, if not the Personnel Chair, then at least the mayor. And I think when that happened last time, they came to both of us or they came to you and you pulled me in.
And I sucked you into it.
And then we consulted with legal. So is that something we can keep in place?
I think something like that could make sense. I'd like to look at what other cities potentially do. And get just a little bit of an understanding of what the legal requirements are around that.
I think we did the right thing at the time.
I do too.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Yeah.
And that, I understand why you have that. I think that makes a lot of sense. Let's go ahead and make sure that we do it right and then do it, right? If you want to keep that in place, I'm all in favor of it. Because it's not always going to be an individual.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be a city administrator. So you need the policy to be set for anybody 100 years from now.
Right.
Totally understand where you're coming from.
And I think that even if we didn't have that set in place, I think that you would have been the default next person anyway by staff. They would have said, well, I can't talk about this situation with my direct supervisor because they're the problem, so I'm gonna go to the mayor anyway. So even if that wasn't.
Yeah, and it's also important to note that one of the things I'll continue to train staff on is what they should do under Oregon law. So all of you have employers, right? There is a set of steps that you take if you need to report what's happening with your senior supervisor. There's only so much that a council person can do because of that separation between a council and an administrative body. You can hear about it. You can certainly commiserate and care a lot, but there's gonna be significant limitations on what you're actually allowed to do after you hear it.
I think when I was the Personnel Chair, if I got the complaint to me, then I had to go to somebody outside of the mayor and the CA. I had to go to some governmental agency.
Like LOC or somebody?
Well, Oregon City, right. So I believe that would fall under both Bureau of Labor and Industries. And there are notices that we're required to have up in our break rooms, both for the federal and the state, that tell employees what their rights are, all the way from taking leave to having complaints about administration. And so the first, yeah, the first step is to make sure that all of that is there so that staff knows what their resources and rights are. But then also to have an additional line of communication to council if they feel that it's something that they really need.
Okay, good to know.
There's always a chain of command. And if there's a problem in your chain of command and you can't go to that person, there's always someone you go ahead of that.
So I'd like to recap where we left off.
Okay.
So I'd like council to consider an action that we recertify all of the positions that are here listed on this page, that we remove finance from the Personnel and Finance Committee, that we include beautification and parks advisory, and that we eliminate ordinance and public works committees. You could summarize that into a total motion. You could do all individual motions if you want. You could do four or five motions if you really want to.
That we follow.
The recommendations.
Second.
Are those the only committees?
We will be having another conversation in the near future about things that I've recommended before, like having a public education and outreach committee, for example. So in removing some of these, we're leaving our attention span open for things that might be more relevant and important to you. We're just doing it in bite-sized chunks.
That's smart. That's all we can handle. Thank you.
So we still need to vote. Okay, are we ready? All right.
Do we need to deliberate after the motion is made?
Are we done deliberating? Okay. All right, councillor Ray.
Yes.
Councillor Lindner.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Councillor Evans. Councillor Myers.
Yes.
Thank you. There you are, Mr. City Administrator.
TJ.
All right, we are on to code enforcement ordinance, second reading. I believe that is in our packet.
If you can change this to this that came from council. In speaking with Mark, he feels confident that these are things that he can do. In speaking with other cities, I know that Harrisburg has considered this in the past, but I don't think they've actually ever moved forward with it. For us, I think it makes sense because we have very limited staff and resources. The next step would be to entertain any final questions that you have. You are allowed to pass this on a second reading if you so choose. So you could do this tonight if you'd like. And if you would like me to, I can read through the ordinance again for either your benefit or the benefit of the public.
Any more questions do you have?
Do we have to have it publicly spoken for the second?
Technically, yes. But I can. We also don't have to have this as the second reading. This could really just be me bringing it to you for a second review, so that you all can ask me additional questions and we could approve it at the following council meeting. That is kind of my intent tonight, to make sure that you guys had eyes on it again, following our last discussion, letting you know that I've had a few more discussions about it outside. I still continue to think that this is a smart way to use staff time and reduce the hours and expenditures that we have on our contract with Benton County Sheriff's Office, so that they're not addressing code enforcement issues when they should be looking at health, life and safety issues.
So I don't know if this question was asked. How is Mark feeling about being the code enforcement officer?
Mark, Mark feels very confident about that for two reasons. One is that we're not sending him around looking for code enforcement issues. And also he has the ability to address issues for people who, for example, where this, one of the reasons this came up, somebody didn't get their prescription in their mailbox.
Oh, that's right.
Right, that was that big issue. He actually has the ability to help that person by writing a code enforcement citation for that car. That was in the way.
Right.
It also gives him the, the right and the ability to go and talk to people. Let's say there's a code enforcement issue. He wants to take a neighbor approach first and say, hey, you really should fix this up. It gives him the ability to knock on the door. And when they say, who are you? They can say, well, I'm, I am the code enforcement person and I'm here to, to try to talk to you first. He's very comfortable with that.
Okay.
We're not asking him to go look for issues. I think that was the only thing he was asking about.
I figured that. I just wanted to make sure that was still the case.
And we, we feel that he has the bandwidth and time to, to handle that.
Yes, and we are going to, we're gonna get him training with the Sheriff's County, or the, the, excuse me, County Sheriff's Office.
Sure.
It's been a long day. And in addition to that, there is training online that is available. And I think that it's worth having him go and do that. A lot of it has to do with, can the person speak to people in, in a nice way? Are they kind? Are they people oriented? With Mark, I have absolutely no concerns whatsoever. This ordinance is written so that I can dedicate or delegate a person to this. It gives me a lot of flexibility. If we don't have Mark years from now and it's somebody else, it could potentially be somebody else or myself or another person.
We have joked in the past that Mark could have a sheriff's badge, but we're not actually gonna do that.
I was just gonna ask for one.
I thought you had already logged off. And so here I am.
Everything sounded great, TJ. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah.
I had a feeling. I just wanted to ask the question again.
And, and, and again, to, to reiterate what he was just saying, I, I would love to more go take a friendly neighbor approach to these kinds of situations. Say, hey, look, this is a problem. We need to rectify this. If it's not rectified, then I gotta come back and be the bad guy. I don't want to do that.
Yeah. Everyone in town knows you and recognizes you and you're like the guy that weighs the sun high. So I think that you're probably the best face of this.
I have a question. So this is an ordinance. So this will go down as like a law for the city. And the way I'm reading it, it's the public works lead will be designated as code enforcement officer. So even years down the road, Mark is no longer here and we have someone else. They will be.
Yes.
Code enforcement officer.
So the other two, the other two lines of that.
Comfortable with it.
The other two lines.
We don't trust with it.
The other two lines of that section allow you the flexibility that you need. So it is ideally in our city, whether Mark is here two years from now or not, I would like for the public lead, works lead person, the person out there in the field on a daily basis and running public works, to be the person in charge of this. I'm not delegating that to somebody else. If it has to be me, great. But this also, that second line gives council the authority to designate another person or position by ordinance or resolution. So if you so choose that we've grown in such a way or changed in such a way that you need to do that, it leaves you that flexibility to do that. And I supervise the enforcement program, so I could also dedicate another individual to that. One change to this, based on what you're saying there, is simply removing the first line and stating that the city administrator has the authority to designate a person. And the second line remains that the council can designate someone else.
I, I think I support that more. It gives you more flexibility. It gives the council more flexibility and it still has the same end in this situation with Mark.
So section three, we will amend that to simply state that the city administrator has the authority to appoint an individual.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Cause what if he's on, you know, he goes for his active duty and whatnot. And so that gives you more flexibility if he's not here. And so I think it's just less sticky.
Absolutely. Shannan will be my, my person out there writing tickets.
We'll get you a sheriff's badge. Sorry, Mark.
Is there gonna be any kind of, like, once Mark gets his training, could he train other people so they have like a small idea of what to do if they had to fill in?
Potentially so. I, I like cross-training. That's something I've really emphasized since starting. I think that's a really good idea.
Also send the other person to the sheriff to get trained and.
Right. So I'm thinking Chuck, Ray, Mark. But where I don't want to go with that is where they're kind of off making their own decisions without a supervisor being aware at least.
Correct.
No, Mark, you don't get a taser.
Darn it.
The dollar store and get your badge.
Well, he is gonna be our wildlife control officer soon too, so he might be carrying a taser. I don't know.
Oh, no.
So I see an amendment already to section number three and I've recorded that. Now we'll bring that to council next round.
Well, could we actually read the ordinance because the, where, all the whereas parts don't have that? We could just say as amended?
Well, I can, you're welcome to do that. Yes, I can.
I'm just saying.
I still have to draft a new ordinance for you to sign. Because I'm making a change right now. I couldn't have you sign in.
It's not finalized.
Right. And that's kind of what I was thinking. I didn't think this was ready for prime time and that's why it still has the, the draft watermark on there. It's just letting you know that you could.
It's like we're revisiting it.
Any other changes though, that you think you might like to see in this? That was a good catch.
Well, it talks about all the citations and everything, but it doesn't say anything about.
Section six. Section six. Appeals.
A responsible party. Responsible party.
So the, so we identify the responsible party as, as the individual. Yeah, the recipient. Yeah. And then we say in a specified number of days, this allows for there to be a policy that administration can change without coming back to the ordinance every single time. If we want to look at those number of days, you simply direct the administrator to change that policy as needed.
Sounds good.
I like the remedy, not exclusive, so it gives us flexibility.
I think it's great.
Okay. So with that one revision, I will come back to council next month and we'll be able to put that in place. I'll have it ready for signature at that.
Sorry, Mark.
Well, you could have dressed up.
We still got 30 days after it passes anyways. Next year. All right, let's go ahead. We'll move on to the city hall structural report. Section 10 dot one, and that's in the package, by the way.
It is.
It's exciting reading, by the way.
I had provided the entire report for you. This really went into more detail than I provided in my presentation last month. I think at the work session rather. The, the big decisions that we have to make right now are, do we want to spend about $25,000 for the engineer to come in and do a a numerical assessment of the building? Which would tell us exactly, on a scorecard essentially, comparing it to the best building in the world, where it falls. My recommendation is that we already know very, very well where we stand with this building, that it cannot be seismically upgraded. And that we would really have to have a new building in order to get it to the point where it's truly safe. I don't feel it's an intelligent use of $25,000 for them to come in and do that scorecard. That is one thing that they offer that we could look at.
Did we, um, so we know for certain already it cannot be seismically upgraded? Is that because of the roof on top of the roof or is it something else?
Yes, we know that. It's more because of the fact that these are those terracotta bricks.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Materials, the original building.
And they're just simply going to crump.
Okay.
They have a number of recommendations here that they could act on, which may make the facility safer for us. But it will absolutely not keep it standing or make it able to go back into after an earthquake event.
Right.
That includes filling some of those cells where they're not fully filled with, filled with concrete. That includes adding a wrapping material on both sides of the wall, which would require ripping off the drywall and the furring strips to access that interior portion of the wall and putting a strip on both sides of it so that if there is an earthquake event, the wall, you know, is basically a bunch of blocks all over the place, but it's still kind of together and we're able to get out. Right.
Right.
We can do some things like ensuring that the roof is strapped. That would be for more related to winds, not necessarily to earthquakes. There are a number of things that in here that they suggest. One next step that I could propose to you, because what I'm asking you to do is to look at a detailed report. I have looked at a detailed report and you're taking my understanding and your own understanding and looking to make a decision. I could ask our engineer of record to join us for a work session to outline in simple terms what he observed, what he believes the best options are. And to attach some relatively accurate dollar signs to that so that you have the information you need as decision makers to move forward.
Does that cost us extra money to have him come?
We will pay them on an hourly basis.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So a couple hundred bucks for him to come tell us.
But we already know.
I know.
And we, we've kind of been down this road and we talked about even doing like a modular or something. I just would. I, I would, well, and I would hate to throw more money after this. We have very little money anyway. If we're going to have to spend money, it really should go towards something we can use.
About potentially some grant funding if we wrap this into like an emergency.
So the emergency operations center funding that is out there. I did have the opportunity to talk some of our, our fellow cities out there. This is an issue. This is something that everybody is concerned about. There is grant funding available for us to go and get that. To build a new facility, we could actually build it right across the street. That is something to consider so that we could remain in our facility into that transition day. We could also look at our existing footprint, a bit more challenging. We'll see how that would work. But I think the next steps are, as you have directed me and I still have on my calendar to do is meet with the fire chief and meet with the sheriff to talk to them about their level of interest in supporting that. My recommendation is that we keep the building here in place. You may want to hear from the engineer on what the cost benefit is on some of those fixes. Cause he's given you a level of detail you haven't received before. He's given you a number of recommendations that you haven't heard before. I am not a subject matter expert who can tell you whether or not your bang for your buck is actually going to come out of that. I just am not. So it might be worth hearing that if you think so. But I also think that we should really put our time and our effort towards building a new city hall as a major capital expenditure and putting a lot of support behind that.
So branch engineering would come out here then just to tell us that it would be what we would need to do to retroactively make it seismically correct. And that doesn't mean that the building structure itself, if we have an event would, would last. It's just to protect our people.
Kind of, yes. What, what's going to make it safest for us to be able to walk out of that building?
Yeah.
And whether or not those costs make sense. That would be something that you would potentially want to know more about.
I mean, I would be interested, I guess, if, in learning about that, learning about the timeframe, learning about, you know, the implementation process of that. But ultimately, I think it's a moot point.
Okay. Um, and they could attend online. It wouldn't be that they'd have to drive down here and bill you for hours. We could have him on for 30 minutes and.
So I, I think I would be interested in that. I mean, I don't think that I, I don't think I, I want us to go down the path of doing a $25,000 comprehensive analysis with all the numbers and everything, but I do think it would be nice to hear from branch for 30 minutes, just if they could present that way.
And that is the council's discretion.
They could present for 10 or 15 minutes and we can ask them questions and.
Yeah.
Then, you know.
I could cap that at 30 minutes though, so we have 30 minutes of billable time, maybe an hour if they have to put 30 minutes into his presentation, right? But we could be conservative about this while also getting you some more information. Personally, if, I feel like I'd like a little more information.
I, yeah.
Just myself, but that is just, that's just me. You are the decision makers. You guys get to decide what we do.
For the emergency preparedness grant would not only include the city hall, wouldn't it also include this building? Because it's in the same boat.
No, no. It would be looking specifically at a facility that would be essentially city hall and an emergency operations center where we can house our emergency services. Like give a space for emergency, like, like a fire department, if they want to add some things to there. Also for our emergency volunteer core organizations that mobilize and support the federal government and the state government will be that kind of stuff, but it would be primarily a city hall building in one footprint.
And our sheriff's substation.
Correct.
Substation.
I'll do it right here. If, I mean, this is something for you all to think about, right? We know that this building is in the same exact position as that building there. So if you wanted to build city hall and a community center together, that is something that you could do. We can get more into the weeds of like what we want to do and how we want to do it, I think, in the coming months. One decision is, is that what we're doing? Are we moving more towards a brand new facility? It sounds like that's the way the discussion is going. So it allows us to think about that.
How long would it take to, I know grant paperwork takes a while. But how long would it take theoretically to do the paperwork, submit it and find out if we got the grant?
Typically, that's around a four to 10 month period somewhere in there.
I'm just wondering, would we be able to put off the city hall work to see if we got the grant or not?
It would be many grants. I want to be clear. So you're looking at probably 10, 15 different grants for a project such as this. And there'd also be a big discussion about what other funds we'd be putting into that and what other organizations are supporting us. So there would be many grants. Not all of them would be successful. We would have to make sure that our full capital stack, the combination of all the money is there before you pull the trigger on going down that road. But it would take some time. You're looking at five years. You're looking at about five years before a facility is ready to go if you were to move forward on it now.
Because wouldn't that be pretty much the only way we could afford a new building?
That's correct. And that's why I was really bringing this up as a strategic, strategic option. We don't have the funding. We don't have the bonding capacity or the citizens, even if we did have the bonding capacity, to fund something like that internally ourselves. So we would have to do it through grants, discretionary funding, uh, you know, advice funding from the legislature if they're able to, to give us money. It would take some time to put that together.
So in the meantime, we're stuck with the building the way it is?
Yes.
Or do what they're proposing?
Correct.
But they're saying that it's, it's the structural condition of the building as is, is still able to be inhabited.
It's grandfathered into the building codes of its time.
So, I mean.
Yeah.
Not ideal, but we are covered.
We're fine. If in the next five years, just like over the last 70 years, or I don't know how long it's been there, there hasn't been a major event. Right? The building's still standing. I expect you know, they say it's about a 50% chance over, we're going to get a, another big one, right? Over the next 50 years. You know, who knows? Who really knows? And this is something that I was working on heavily at the coast because we have tsunamis to worry about as well. You, you just got to make a decision and aim towards it and keep making progress towards that decision and hope that it doesn't happen. I will tell you though, if, if a major earthquake did happen, I would be willing to bet that our timeframe to completion of the new facility, or at least getting that funding would significantly shorten, right? Because there's going to be all kinds.
We don't want to look at it that way.
Of emergency, I'm just saying, right?
Yeah.
That would be kind of the reality of that. But.
Because it's habitable currently and technically on paper, it doesn't mean it's a safe place for our staff to be.
That is correct. And that's what he's telling us here.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and that's why we shouldn't be turning a blind eye to it. We need to make some action and make some motion, even though we know that it moves slowly.
Yeah.
It's a good idea to hear from them for a half an hour, 15 minutes or whatever.
Yeah.
So that you know and the public knows that you heard that and that it's something you're aware of. And then make a decision intelligently about what is, what are we going to do? What path are we going to actually go down and, and make this a commitment? I think that it really is your only option.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
We can listen. That's fine. Ask questions.
So I, I'm kind of pushing this, so I want to make sure I'm, I'm hearing you properly. Are you supporting my recommendation to have the engineer speak for half an hour at the next?
Yes.
Session? Is there any concern about that?
No. No, I think it's worth the, the bill.
And we need to do our due diligence. So.
I have a question. Has there been a study for earthquake happened along the subduction zone off the coast? Has there been a study of how much damage we probably would get here?
Of dollars. I'm, I'm, I'm an earthquake prepper, so everyone knows I'm a prepper and it's, it's going to be a bad time.
Yeah.
Billions, billions of dollars. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're pretty much not safe until you get into the cascade foothills and then everything east of the cascades is okay.
There's an actual fault running up along the border.
So a lot of the soil will liquefy and anything solid will drop into the soil. Bridges are going to collapse. Topography is going to change significantly, right? There's a, it's a big deal. Look at what happened in the 1700s. That was the last time the big one happened. Also, if you're curious about information on this, the Association of Pacific Rim Universities, APRU, University of Oregon is a member. I've been a part of that organization for some time. They do a lot of research everywhere from Australia all the way through the United States and China on what's going to happen and where. But we can only focus on our little corner of the world.
Yeah.
Do the best that we can each day to get us to where we need to be.
Yes, that's sensors all over that you can look up.
Yeah.
It's like 10 hours a day.
Extremely familiar with Southern California's faults. Geology was my major back then.
We, OSU actually has a, a Cascadia Subduction Zone specialist named Chris Gold, Gold something. You can email him if you're interested in learning more from the local person.
There you go.
Yeah. Sorry.
And then there's also the Dogami Department of Geology, Mining, Geology and Mining Industries. That's that they are Dogami and they, they have some of that information as well.
Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to move on, guys?
Yes.
Okay. Computer equipment request, another presentation.
Here, this one's quick and simple and easy. We talked about this briefly before. I can tell you first off that there is the funding available to make this purchase happen. I can also tell you that staff, the last time that we purchased computers was in 2017. So when we brought on our first full-time city administrator, Rick Hanbaum, that was also the very first time that we bought new computers. So all of the computers throughout all of city hall, those are those computers, with the exception of the little one that I have on my desk. It's a little square. That one's brand new. And I had recommended previously that we move that one into this facility, because you guys can't see my screen, but it is significantly smaller because it's running an XP machine. I wanted to give you, you wanted to know a little bit more about the math and what I'm requesting. So as you know, we're working with the council of governments. They charge us $40 a month to maintain our computers, which is a great deal. That's $200 a month. All of the security and everything, which is why we're looking at new computers. It's very hard for them to update and keep secure the machines that we have right now. The cog recommended a machine that is normally $1,600. It is currently on sale for $8.89. Even so, personally, I don't feel that we need this kind of machine. None of us, I mean, this is an, it's basically an I5, which is a pretty decent machine, but it has 12 threads. None of us are using any software that needs to go that fast. It has 32 gigs of RAM. None of us are gamers. We don't really need 16, 32 gigs of RAM. A 512 SSD, you're going to get that with everything. The thing that they liked about it was that it had Windows Pro, because I asked them, what is it about this computer that makes it important for us? And they said, well, to get it into our inventorying software and to monitor it and all the things we need to do to take care of you, it should have Pro and not the home version of Windows. So I said, okay, cool. I came up with a machine that is 549 per computer. This is a 13th gen I5, so 10 cores instead of 12, similar speed. It has Windows 11 Pro. It is significantly scaled down. It's half the, half the RAM. So it's 16 gigs of RAM, also 15 or 512 gigs of, of storage. This is the, the cheapest computer that Dell offers that is going to meet those requirements that the cog has for us. It really comes down to the Pro version. You can add some other bells and whistles. We do not have touchscreen. We don't have a metal case or any of the other things that come along with it. It's also $100 less than it normally would be. And to give you.
What are all the sockets on it? What's available? USB?
All the things.
HDMI.
Yeah, HDMI, USB has all the same stuff. Yep.
Will the monitor be big enough?
So we already have monitors at our desk that we, we're just going to close the machine. Connected to our two monitors. For the most part, these are going to hang out on the desk unless we need to go home. For example, Dawn was on her home computer tonight. Mark was on his home computer tonight. I am oftentimes on my home computer that I actually have with me now, right there, when I have to go to different places. I was going to present from it in that seat, which is why I brought it. Having the computer would be really helpful if I'm at a conference or folks are home and need to present to you. A laptop that is. And more importantly, if the cog needs to come get the machine and do something with it and reimage it or fix it back at the shop, it's easy for them to do that.
Yeah.
Does the hubs come with that or do we already have?
We don't need hubs. I don't think we need hubs at all. It doesn't come with it, but I mean, you can set the display setting to just extend.
Yeah, I mean, if you have enough for us, right?
Yeah, exactly. I, I think we'll be fine. The hubs are like an extra 80 to $100 or something like that now. They're getting expensive. I don't think that we need them. We don't have hubs right now.
I have two different kinds, but yeah.
I'm sorry. Remind me again, what does cog stand for?
The Council of Governments. They were the folks that presented about their IT and we ended up buying into their service. Right. Let me be clear with you on guys on something. So when, when I was in Tillma County, this was right before I started. Staff in the whole county had no access to any of their services because somebody hacked into one of their computers and ended up holding everything ransom.
Oh.
And they ended up having to play ball with that organization. And one of the things that they did was they tightened up all this stuff. Security and everything else, which is why we brought a competent and capable organization like the cog on board that is also insured for those kinds of things. We also want to make sure that our machines are equally up to the task. So I'm recommending a conservative and. So I'm recommending a conservative and frugal approach. It's about half of the cost of what the Cog is recommending. This is just under three thousand dollars. And we do have the funding available within our budget for computer purchases across the different departments. So this is something that.
Six machines or five?
This is five machines.
Okay.
Because we have the one in here already, so it would just be five staff people. We will address the water plant later.
Okay.
What I'm looking for is your blessing to move forward with this. Again, you set the budget. You gave me the authority. You gave the city administrator the authority to make this purchase. I'm not going to do this without your support.
So you need a resolution or just?
I don't. I actually, I could do this without council action, without bringing it to council, but I don't want to do that. I think it's.
You have my support.
I think it's, was there any pushback or any reason not to do that?
We can do a quick vote if you want.
It's up to you. It's absolutely.
Just do a quick vote. That's cool. I just need a motion of some sort.
I'll make a motion that we vote on post-staff machines, post-staff proposed machines.
Purchasing.
For about three thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions before we go real quick? Nope. Okay. Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Cutford?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Linder?
Yes.
Counselor Ray?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Buy them babies.
Buy them.
Older are current laptops already? They're like seven or eight years old then?
They're eight years old because they were purchased in twenty seventeen. I'm surprised they're limping along. I flipped them over to look at it. Wow, this is impressive. I wish any of my computers would last eight years.
All right. So, next on the agenda. City code fifty-one dot zero five three meter error.
So I'm bringing this to you tonight not for action. I'm bringing this to your attention. I'd like to have a more robust discussion about this during our work session coming up.
Okay.
So as you're getting comfortable with, I like to plant the seed, let you think about it, and then we'll get down to it. I have a brief presentation for you and this will carry you through the high level nuts and bolts. So, chapter fifty-one oh five three meter error of our city code. I wanted to review that with you. I wanted to identify some compliance issues as well as some best practices, recommendations, and explain when we can charge for a water meter test and when we can't, and to present some recommended code and policy updates for council to consider. Why this matters, a customer dispute over a high water bill raised a question about meter accuracy. And that had me look a little more in detail about what our requirements are versus what most other cities do versus what the Oregon revised statutes and this, the state agencies have to say. I mean, what I want to point out is that we want to protect the city from disputes and liability, want to ensure fairness and transparency, want to align with consumer standards, and also build public trust in our city operations. So our current code, it was adopted in nineteen ninety-one through ordinance two one six. And essentially about two percent accuracy intolerance. So if it's more or less than, if it has more than a two percent in either direction, that's the tolerance where we would essentially go and address the problem or replace it. We would take a twenty-five dollar deposit from customers if they requested the test. We would refund that only if the meter over registers by more than two percent. That's good. And no leak adjustment or refund policy. So we have no adjustment to refund policy in place. Right now, staff has been sort of making a decision as these come along. They don't come along too often until recently because we have a lot of our manual reads still in place. It's outdated and a little incomplete in terms of the language. It only references over registration but not under registration, right? So if it's too low or not fast enough. There's no written documentation on our reporting requirements and there's no consumer protection or leak relief mechanism there. How do we fix the problem if it really was a problem?
I'm not following. So this is a meter error on the meter and not like the what they're reading it with?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the actual physical water meter that's in the box.
So what?
In the ground, right? So when Mark goes around and reads your meter, he in one type has a little device that just sends him a signal with what the number is. And in others, he has to go and manually read it. But in all instances, there is some complicated machinery happening.
Needs to be calibrated.
Yeah. And sometimes it breaks and sometimes it's wrong. And sometimes people need to say, hey, that feels wrong to me as a customer. I want you to do something about that.
Why I'm on city council because of this reason.
Remember, this came up a few years ago.
So what are you gonna do about it? I see a number of things that we should really address.
Okay.
So the Oregon regulatory framework, there is an Oregon advised statute essentially, Oregon administrative rule, excuse me, from the Public Utility Commission. Now, I want to make it clear, we are not a PUC regulated entity. PUC regulates those water utilities that are owned by a private entity. There's actually quite a few of them out there. Private organizations provide water to individuals and they're regulated. We're not regulated by them, but they have some excellent policies in place to protect consumers. And I want you to know what those are, because I'm recommending that you emulate them, which is what a lot of jurisdictions who are not PUC regulated still do. Because the OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, ORSs are silent on this for public utilities.
So that would align us with a standard that's
Yes.
statewide recognized.
For private utilities, yes, it would align us with those standards. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
The Oregon Health Authority governs systems like us, but they don't offer, like I said, they don't say anything about a billing. They're silent on that entirely. We have the full authority to operate our utilities and set fees as we wish, so we can continue doing what we're doing if we so choose. But I want to recommend that we don't, again, write for transparency. And there's also a manual. This is an international manual that defines what the technical standards are for meter testing. I want to recommend that we adopt those as well. Right now, we don't have a good system for testing, except for sending it off to somebody that is a little ways away. So we have to ship it to them. They take three or four days to do it, and it's not cheap. I want to go ahead and buy the machinery that we need to test our own meters. We're only gonna get bigger. We're not getting smaller as a city. When the city can charge a customer. So customer requested test and a meter is accurate, plus or two minus percent, we can retain the deposit. Customer requested test and the meter is inaccurate, the deposit is refunded. And if we initiate the test, if we say we think there's a problem, there should be no charge to the customer whatsoever. We should make that very clear. And the customer requests repeated tests within twelve months, fee is allowed. So typically what they say within those rules that are run by the P A, the PUC under the Oregon Administrative Rule that they control, basically says you're allowed one free test per calendar year for twelve months. And then after that, we can simply charge you for what the cost is.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where the deposit is refunded, you have it greater than plus or minus two? So even if it's minus two or greater than minus two, we refund the deposit?
I think I probably should have removed the plus or minus.
Yeah.
On the fly.
All right.
Thank you. Good catch.
Thanks.
And so, yeah, there would be a fee. What Harrisburg does is they charge for one hour of public utility staff time. And what's nice is they peg it to whatever that is at the time. So as that increases, we simply bill you for that. And it's very, very clear what it's supposed to be.
And does it usually take about an hour to do the test?
I assume as much. Chuck was telling me that that's what they they charge. It sounds like that's how long it takes. They do it in-house. They don't ship it off. So I want to recommend as we go through this process, we simply invest in the, what we would need.
To calibrate or system.
Because we are legally required to allow anybody to test their meter. So it's gonna get expensive if that starts happening more.
If we have three different kind of meters like we do now, is that the same equipment or does it vary based on the meters?
Thank God, everything's three quarter. Everything's one inch. Everything's two inch, right? There are some things that are standardized and we're good.
That's amazing.
So it's one.
I just was having nightmares.
Yeah.
One tester meter.
Because it's about pressure and flow and all of the variables are a simple equation that is similar to every system out there, no matter what they.
Just explain how much pressure and flow's gone through there and you should say the same as this says over here.
A working policy that if there was any question on one of the old meters, they automatically put a new one.
That is my policy right now, because I'm not having staff spend a bunch of time. If somebody has a question about, that's why I'm having them hold aside some of those meters, those three quarter inch ones. Those are gonna go in where those, you know, Route One, where those old census meters are, not census. I forget the name of them. Mark, if you're on there, you can correct me. No, it's not Hershey Mueller either. It's the.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
What's the name of the meters we hate? The old manual reads?
The old manual reads?
EOCs.
So the ones that Steve was purchasing since I've been here, those are Hershey Mueller's. And I believe, I think the old, old, old manual read ones are as well. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can look tomorrow.
Got it. It's not that important. I was just, it was a point of discussion.
Them have nylon gears.
Let me, I might have a photograph of one. Let me check.
Right on. But what I'm doing is prioritizing. If anybody has a question or a concern about one of those Route One old meters, I'm not spending any more time on it. We're simply going to put a new one in and stop spinning our wheels.
So, yes, this is a, this old school one, just generic manual read is a census.
It is a census.
Yep.
Oh, you had it right. That was your first guess.
I wasn't sure.
Nice.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
I think we have a mix of both, though.
Yep, yep, yep. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And by the way, the the test fee is a deposit, not a penalty. It must be refunded if the meter is inaccurate. Those are generally the rules that the PUC regulated entities do. And so, by the way, in your packet for the work session, I'll have all of this information there so you can look at it side by side. This is the high level to get you initiated. My recommended updates is that we modernize the wording. We need to, we need to dial in the accuracy standard. Talk about repair, replace faulty meters. Make sure we're clear about that. Again, I can bring to you recommendations about what other cities are doing. We need to add consumer protection. So like talk about the refund rule, the right to witness the test. That is something that is a requirement. And also a written test report that goes to the customer. The right to witness the test, that's built in by law to the PUC regulated entities. They literally could not ship theirs out if they wanted to because of that rule. How are you going to witness it if you're shipping it to somebody who's doing it for you offsite? We want to add a billing adjustment, adjustment formula. So we want to be very, very clear that we'll adjust up to three prior billing cycles. Right now, staff hasn't had any direction on how to do that. And so it's been kind of a case by case basis. We want to add a leak adjustment policy, so potentially a fifty percent reduction for documented repairs. Most jurisdictions, including where I've built, where I've lived, Harrisburg, the city of Eugene, all of them will give you a fifty percent reduction if you fix it and prove you fixed it within a certain period of time. You're wasting our our water. I have to pay Mark to go make more water because this one is leaking, right? And so that's a public cost and it's a public benefit to fix it. And also, we want to add a record keeping requirements. We want to retain those tests for up to three years in case there's any dispute or somebody says, hey, what about that? Later on down the road, that's not in our policy. It is something that most utilities do. There's some liability issues there if we don't have it on record and somebody comes back to us and says, hey, you know, let me, let me dig into that a little bit further. This I provided for you.
You absolutely probably can't read that.
But this is the city of Harrisburg. I just want to point out a couple of things that I've highlighted here. So first off, the meter test on customer request, you need a week's notice. So how quickly do you test it from the time they ask you? A lot of people want it done right now. Well, they bake in a week. They say, listen, give us that time because we have other business that we have to address this. We did talk about in a deposit equal to one hour of public works time. They talk about a written report giving the test results within ten days. They talk about a refund that'll be provided to the customer and if it's not, if it's an issue with us and we did something wrong. And also corrected meter reading for a period not exceeding three months. So the recommendation from the PUC is exactly what Harrisburg is doing. Slow meters, they talk about slow and fast. Right now, we're not talking about both. And also with both of those, the not exceeding three months component. The other thing that they talk about is the adjustments on accounts of underground leaks, where a leak exists underground between the meter and the building. If they repair it within ten days, then you'll get the refund. If you don't, you're not getting the fifty percent refund. I like that word.
It incentivizes.
People to go and fix the problem.
Yep.
I'm sorry, can we go back? So, um, yeah, so the deposit and amount equal to one hour of public works time. That doesn't get tied to a specific employee, right? Like, I don't want an employee out there fixing something and then this person is like, well, I got billed twenty-nine dollars fifty cents. Now I know what that person's hourly rate is. Like, I don't, I don't, I want it to be, you know what I mean? Like, I don't, I want to protect our staff and their salary. Technically, it's all public information because we're a city, we're government, but most people aren't gonna go online and look up staff members' wages. And I, I just, I don't want people tying their bill specifically to a worker's salary.
Not necessarily their salary. It's your, your billing hours. It's like.
And I would be, and that's where I was going next to that. Can we just tie it to, as you said, like twenty-five dollars an hour or thirty dollars an hour? I just, I worry about that particular language in the ordinance.
Problem is, as inflation happens over time, what we're really trying to do is pay for the hour that it took for that employee to fix that thing. And so we tie it to that so that as inflation happens, we're simply just charging them what the hour is.
Yeah.
Now we're five years from now.
Yeah.
You go through a budget committee process where you very clearly tell the public what each employee is making, how much money you're gonna give them as an increase.
No, I just, I.
Our Personnel and Finance Committee meeting, we talk about this in detail. I want to, I want to say that what you're talking about is a valuable and important thing to bring up. I encourage you to bring that to the work session so that the council can talk that out.
Okay.
And I appreciate you bringing it up so everybody can be thinking about it.
I, it is, it is, all of our wages are public because we're a government, but I just don't like the idea of somebody standing in the window.
All of our wages are public.
It's a legitimate concern and as a counselor, we'll, we'll capture that and come back to it.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on this or to get a order, or get to the order you're welcome to bring up now. We can also, this will be on your agenda for the work session.
Okay, got it.
Are there any other questions or comments on this now?
Thank you for catching this and suggesting some revisions. Looks like we're due.
Yep, definitely.
So we're just wanting to take this testing in-house, basically have a validated, calibrated.
Do it right. Do it by industry standards and make it clear to the public what we're doing.
Right.
And how often do we do it on our end?
How often do we initiate a test? Not unless we think something's funky. But usually, it's if we don't think we're billing enough.
So we don't calibrate them every so often?
We calibrate them when they go in. And that's it.
That's it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it. We had big problems on, on our street when we moved in, like seven hundred dollar water bills. We weren't even there for two weeks out of the month. No water was out.
Without the development?
You're gonna get online, you're gonna say, okay, what are they gonna do for me right now? And if you find nothing, or if you find what we have, right, you might get upset. And what I want to do is make sure that we do what we want to do, which is to take care of our citizens.
Okay, another question. I'm sorry.
No, you're not.
No, I'm like, I'm sorry. So in, in the case of Counselor Williams, what, what if we have another similar situation where we have a new development that goes in? Who is on the hook for inappropriately calibrating or on incorrectly installing one of these meters? Is that the city or is it the development?
Nope. A meter is one hundred percent owned, operated, purchased, completely by us.
Okay. I was just kind of hoping that the development would be on the hook.
If I can make the developer buy those, I would, but no.
Okay.
Yeah, when my, my water broke. They only had one valve.
Our neighbor moved out within a month.
And I called and they said, you're not allowed to touch that. I said, the water pouring out.
Yeah, we had a situation where somebody tampered with their meter and it broke. And we had to address that. One of the things I'll be bringing to you as a core, I can't throw everything to you at once. But a similar policy that we need to button up is what do we do when somebody breaks their meter? That's already happened. I had to make an administrative decision. That makes me uncomfortable. I prefer to have a real policy in place. This is everything I have on that.
Okay, we'll look forward to talking about it in the work session then.
Yeah, my water bill, we adjust about twenty cents a month, so.
Oh, stop.
Last item.
Yeah, now we're on the committee reports.
Twenty minutes, twenty cents.
Mine's about ninety-five bucks.
Uh, under committee reports, economic development, we just restarted meetings with that committee after what basically Counselor Myers, a year. It's been a year. So we're, we're just trying to get our feedback under us again. So, and we do have that committee meeting once a month. So we'll be reconvening on November twentieth, I believe.
I just noticed my error that I kept the last date for the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting on there. I didn't even catch it.
Oh, that's fine. I'm glad that you say something about it because I was like, oh, crumbs, was I supposed to reference notes from that meeting and I don't have my binder with me, so.
Looked like that was on purpose.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I was making, I was like, report on that. And so my update for the Finance and Personnel Committee is that we are going to. We are going to schedule the next meeting after this meeting. So I don't have a date for you all yet, but hopefully tonight we'll come up with one. You're not on it till January. Don't you be moving anywhere. What's that?
The personnel meeting.
Not technically yet. Not yet. It's still technically a finance and personnel.
So ordinance, I have no update, but I'm looking forward to my committee being going away.
You're next.
As soon as we get things squared away, I'd love to have a meeting. We really need to work on our. Master plan and. Counselor Williams has been so kind to lend her expertise to get us started. So, but. It's just with me and we need more people.
So can I touch on that too?
Go ahead.
I still have the donation from Pacific Power for upgrading some plants and shrubbery too.
Oh, yes. Yep.
Mark and I discussed is that he will be your staff for that committee. So Mark will be staffing the parks committee moving forward.
Perfect. Good. Well, and now is the right time to get and plant just so that things can get established over the winter. So. As soon as we can get a date set. I just don't know if we, I mean, how we go about doing that right now.
I can say is that what we can do is via email, make some recommendations about when the next day could be and I can coordinate that with Mark.
Okay.
So that we reach out to each of you and.
That'd be perfect. Sooner rather than later would be great.
Okay.
That would be.
Public Works.
It doesn't exist anymore.
We're just not gonna do it. We're just not. We've been getting updates from Chuck and Mark and I think those have been good for right now. I think they have a lot on their plate. And we need to let them mind their business and, and handle it like they've been doing. They've been doing a great job and it's been a lot for them to have to tackle.
Thank you. Thanks for the recognition.
Okay, we're on to counselor comments.
I have a comment.
Go for it.
I want to at the next work session. Visit the. Water at City Hall, the drinking water. Because. The filtered water for the employees. I don't feel we should give them filtered water. I mean, city water, yes. Because we don't give the residents filtered water. We ask, we tell them it's okay to drink the city water. So. With that note, I think. Our employees aren't any better than our citizens. And. We should give them something other than the bathroom sinks to get city water from. And if they don't want to drink the city water, they're welcome to bring water.
We could certainly talk about it.
I mean, I get bottled water to drink out of my own pocket. If all the residents want bottled water, they have to buy it out of their pocket.
I think it would be a nice.
From the residents. To get bottled water for staff. Myself, I don't think that's a good idea. And I'm starting to hear. From people that that's not a good idea. They don't think it's a wise thing for their tax dollars. When they don't get that.
The only thing I would be concerned about, and I don't really know, I just know from other. Things I do is that sometimes that's an OSHA requirement. And so certain things have to be provided. Now, I don't know what level they have to be provided at. But I know something has to be provided. So I'm out of my realm, except I know that. In another position that I do, water has to be provided for staff.
I would love to see that. I haven't been able to locate that requirement. It was communicated to me verbally that that was an understanding. I don't know of other cities doing that and I haven't seen it. If you can provide that to me, this is, this is a moot issue. But what I will say, and you and I have already talked about that, Counselor Evans, that, you know, we have a, we have a sink right now, a bathroom sink.
The bathroom sink is where they get their water?
That's, that's the only water we have. So we would need some other sanitary form of water.
Right.
In the city hall. But what I want to point out is that Counselor Evans is, is bringing up a point she feels strongly about. And this is her time and opportunity to do that. And then we can discuss this in the proper form during a work session.
All right. Okay. What other comments from the counselors we have? Because if you don't have any, you're gonna have to listen to me. No?
I was just gonna say.
Go ahead.
It, it brings up a perfect opportunity to promote the public relations or the public education committee. Things like this.
Yes.
You know, she brings up a, a good. Subject, you know, it's an image issue.
Perception, yes.
And on the other hand, everybody brings up a good, if you only have a bathroom sink, that's not up to OSHA standards.
Right.
We either spend five thousand dollars putting in new plumbing. Or we, you know, do the water thing now. So I mean, it's part of that public education we need to do, regardless of which way we go.
Right. And I see all signs, you know? Right. I mean, I could play devil's advocate for every sign. When you think about the residents. Their tax dollars are going to, towards salaries. Like we had at City Hall. As well as like the water treatment, the roads and various other things, the sheriff. You know?
Right.
You're doing your job, counselor. You are, this is a representative democracy and your job is to represent the people who elected you to be here. And that's what you're doing. And I commend you for that. I think that the council will have the opportunity to discuss this and make the right decision.
It will be a work session topic. Any other counselors? Comments? Okay, my turn.
Just looking at the trick or treating hours. I'm like, yes, sir.
Oh, yes, sir. Well, that's a good question, yeah.
I was kinda worried.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
No, the mayor took care of it. It's fine.
That's right. You took care of all the, the floats that got.
The inflatables and the flags. Yeah. Well, the fire department took care of the, the flags. They took them home to dry them out. Yeah, I did too. So the first thing I wanted to bring up was I wanted to congratulate Counselor Linder on her outstanding service award that she is going to be receiving. Later this month for the Tri-Canal Chamber of Commerce.
I did not know you were gonna say anything about that. Thank you.
Yes, I'm good.
Yes, I did nominate you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Her, her volunteer service. And a little bird suggested you, so I just went for it. If the little bird wants to say, they, they will. If they don't, that's fine.
Thank you, mayor.
Yeah. Uh, next thing I wanted to bring up is, so we've got the spectacular on Halloween night. It'll be four to seven thirty PM. I've got. The map, it's online too, where all the kids can check out where they get their treats or if there's a truck retreat or. I know there's a special Halloween event at the food pantry. And that map, we've got maps at City Hall. We got them online. So we got some here. If you want to take some, feel free. Want to bring that up. Also, in conjunction with the spectacular, we are also, the city is accepting donations for shelf-stable food. To hand out to kids and families on Halloween night as well. So I've got another flyer here. It's, it's online now too. It's on social media as well. On suggestions to donate to City Hall and we'll take those donations and hand them out.
That's great.
Is actually also receiving cash donations to purchase things for this as well. So she's already got a hundred and twenty dollars donated so far. And that's like just this afternoon. Yeah.
Who designed these? They're so cute. You did? Nice. They're adorable.
Yeah, I'm like a graphic designer.
Times you're supposed to actually be working. These are the questions I get at work.
This is actually, I just, this is, I think, the third year we've done the Halloween map. So I just take it.
Plug and play.
I go ahead and I contact all the businesses, make sure they're still doing it and adjust it and.
Change your ear.
Can I ask really quickly as a point of order, how many counselors think that you'll be attending on Halloween night?
I plan on being down.
Who else? Anybody else? Counselor Ray, I'm seeing Counselor Williams and the mayor.
Yes.
Is it possible anybody else might be there?
I will be important.
You, you might.
Maybe.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and we'll, we'll post it then. Okay. My wife will be there too. So surely help them in on the food.
And just for the, the public's knowledge, anytime there's the possibility of a quorum being at any public event. Simply need to state that I promise we're not gonna be talking about business and to tell the public you're doing that. So if anybody sees you there, they're now, you know, say essentially, hey, what are you guys doing?
We're voting on the best Halloween candy.
And you know, you can dress up counselors.
I, I plan on it.
Well, the one, it's not appropriate.
You're gonna borrow the lion's mane.
You're just gonna deliver it and I'll just.
Well, my wife and I do my cousin Benny. You guys.
Okay, cool. Before I adjourn, the next planning commission meeting is November third, correct?
Yes.
And the next city council meeting is Monday, November twenty-fourth. That is all I have.
That's right before Thanksgiving.
Really good point. Perhaps we can discuss at the work session whether we want to move that date.
That's fine. Joining tonight, please go to bed. And everybody else, thank you for being online. We're gonna go ahead and log off and adjourn for the night. Thank you. Good night.